So it is required to meet higher standards with regards to architectural excellence, green building and public realm enhancements. So the heights and the densities that are proposed are in line with what is expected in the plan. The building has been designed in a typical rectangular shape with the unique architectural design elements that pronounce the edges of the building and the balcony elements. The proposal has been designed to reduce carbon emissions by a further 50% beyond what is required in the green buildings policy. And as I mentioned, there is a proposal to include a new plaza that's located right at the corner of Nicola and Georgia. Now, the site has a little bit of an interesting context when it comes to the housing policy. The West End Community Plan does not require rental replacement in this area of the plan. Instead, it seeks to seek public benefit in the form of a CAC that would be attributed as per the West End Public Benefits Strategy. Additionally, the rental housing stock official development plan does not apply to this site because of the underlying DD zone. It's not subject to the ODP. So there's 162 rental units that are on the site that rent between $1,600 to $2,100 for a one or two bedroom unit. So despite there is no policy requirement to replace the rental, the applicant has proposed to replace all 162 rental units at market rates. Staff agree that because of the sheer number of units that would be impacted by the redevelopment of the site, we do support the replacement of this rental tenure. I also want to note that of the 162 units, 100 of the tenancies are covered under the tenant relocation policy. So they're not below market. Market rental housing does provide a more affordable housing option for half of Vancouver's population as compared to homeownership. And so on the slide in front of us, there is a comparison between the average market rental rates within the downtown compared to the cost of homeownership that include a 10% down payment as well as the monthly mortgage payments. So following a negotiated CAC process, the applicant has offered an $8.9 million cash contribution towards the West End Public Benefits Strategy. This value does contemplate the market rental replacement that has been included in the project. So with the CAC along with the DCLs and public art fee, the total benefits offered by the applicant is just about $17.5 million. So with that, council staff do recommend that the proposal for a 49-story residential building at 1450 West Georgia be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report in front of you. The proposal does meet the intent of the West End Community Plan, along with the corresponding rezoning policies and the higher buildings policy. If approved, the project would deliver $8.9 million in the form of a CAC. And as always, staff and the applicant are available for questions that council may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much to staff. And I'm just going to note for council that we also have a presentation on this application from the applicant team. And so I'm going to ask that that be queued up now.
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Dean Johnson, Vice President of Development at West Group Properties. Thank you for taking the time to consider our application tonight. We're excited to discuss the proposal. We are joined tonight by members of our consulting team, some of whom will present shortly. All of whom are available for questions. The architect for this project is Tazo Yamamoto, landscape architect David Stoico, envelope and energy design consultant Chad Ranswick, inherited consultant Don Luxton. We're also joined by Brad Jones, SVP of Development. This project has been in discussion with staff for quite some time. I would just like to take a moment and thank Nick and other members of the planning staff, who have been great to work with through this process and who are a reason we are. As Nick mentioned, West Group... Next slide. West Group acquired the site early 2018. And we quickly realized the property was not going to be rebuilt. The Georgian towers were constructed in the 50s, as Nick mentioned, and had been extensively renovated over its long life. We wanted to quickly note that also, given the corner of the intersection of West Georgia, Nicola and Alberta Streets, we had many discussions with staff about two Nicholas Streets, which did need to be removed as part of this application solely for the reason to actually construct the project, given it's on a very busy street in West Georgia, and we're not able to.
Just a note for the applicant, you are cutting out a little bit. I wonder if you could just check your connection or make sure you're close to your mic.
Sure, is that better?
That does sound better. Thank you.
Okay, let's try that. Next slide, Tazo. At a high level, when we really started thinking about this project, the importance of the site and higher building policy, we went down the same path as many high-profile towers in downtown go. We consulted with a handful of architects, some of which international, to understand what the vision of the site might be. However, as a local family-owned developer and contractor, we were impressed by our discussions with local architect Tazo Yamamoto. We quickly realized that we didn't need to look internationally for expertise or inspiration. We have a world-class professional working here in Vancouver, and the inspiration from our environment makes the projects what they are. It makes us unique. Therefore, we have engaged an entirely local architect team to work on the project. We additionally started to look at what was possible on the site and asked the question, how does a project show leadership and sustainability? Would we be the same as others, or would we take the opportunity to do something different? We arrived at a concept that is designed for and inspired by Vancouver, of what we call a Made in Vancouver approach. Tazo, next slide. One of the key aspects of the higher building policy is demonstrating leadership and sustainability. Challenges posed by the requirements of higher buildings policy and zero-energy building policy have necessitated experimental or innovative techniques. Recently, most higher building policy sites had used expensive internationally-produced wall systems and components to meet those standards. Although we believe those methods of achieving sustainability are important and allow for new systems to be tested in our marketplace, they are expensive and unproven, and in the short term, may not lead to replicable systems that could be applied across the lower median. Our Made in Vancouver approach to sustainable design is based on enhancing existing technology. This means we are not amending new technology, but tweaking existing technology to match performance of these expensive systems. In short, this is done through physically separating the balconies from the slab to eliminate thermal bridging and to use external structure to support those balconies. This prototype design could be replicated across the region, is not proprietary. It could be replicated by anyone as design becomes more, as the cost to hit step-coded zero-energy building policies come into effect. West Group is excited to build on proven local technologies and construction methods that local trades have mastered. To develop this design, we worked with forming contractors, we need manufacturers, as well as envelope engineers to ensure that this was possible. Finally, an added benefit of building with this system, rather than a more traditional system for higher building policy projects, is the speed of construction. The way that the system allows for faster install times and shorter overall construction times. Tazo, can you skip ahead? Make the next one as well. Hit play if you could. Normally, we'd bring our building model to council chambers. However, since we are not able to do so, we prepared this short fly-through. As Nick explained earlier, the application proposes replacing 160 units of market rental, which will be located in the lower section of the tower. There is a break in the building containing an amenity deck, which is the height of the existing Georgian towers. You will note that the model, the extent of the external structure supporting these balconies, those expansive balconies provide solar shading as an outdoor space, which improves resident living. Now, I will pass this over to Tazo and David Stoico, which will speak further to how the sustainability goals and the design concept for the tower are interwoven. Tazo, you say it from here.
Thank you very much, Dean. I hope everybody can hear me. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. So thank you very much. So when we started this project, you know, we felt like the design should be appropriate to Vancouver. And it, of course, because it's a high building, it needs to achieve a certain level of architectural excellence. So we looked to our surroundings. The forest is a part of Vancouver's identity, both as a backdrop, but also in recognition that the entire downtown was once a forest. So in some ways, the tree is the original Vancouver Tower. So while the tree form is quite expressive, the structure is very simple. And for us, that was a perfect analogy of what a tower could be. The thermal core and the structural core is very simple, but the balconies in this case could become the expressive form and identity of the building. This tree concept also creates the vision of the building with the balcony volume splitting at the top and at the bottom to create the impression of branches and roots. And the layer of balconies contains rental apartments, a shared mid-tower amenity space, and market into a singular form. With our design, the exterior balconies only touch back to the building at points, similar to how branches touch back to the tree trunk. This approach allows us to have the form of the building created by the balconies, but totally independent of the thermal core and the efficiency of the building. With this structure, with this strategy, the structure, the form, and the envelope are all connected in a way to maximize envelope and energy performance. So these are some very brief animations to just compare our approach to a conventional cantilevered balcony and a thermally broken balcony. So you can see in a cantilevered balcony, the slab goes continuous inside to out, which allows cold to go directly inside. And to compensate, that means additional heating and energy are required to offset that. With an ISOCORB, which is a thermally broken system, there's a product that's cast in the space between the inside and outside, and while it helps, it doesn't eliminate the transfer of cold from outside to inside. So in our case, our proposal is to create a gap between that exterior balcony and the interior slab by using the exterior structure. This allows us to effectively create a blanket of insulation around the entire building, and the balconies are totally independent of that thermal envelope. In terms of the Made in Vancouver approach, you know, the building needs to meet very high targets, both from the policy perspective, but also from our own principles. We've taken the design approach rather than relying on technology or imported products to solve what are inherently design flaws in other designs. This approach allows us to have a simple, singular envelope that covers the entire building and to use locally manufactured window wall to clad the entire tower. So this leads to faster construction schedule, which means less disruption, and also cost savings. So we feel our design offers an innovative way to achieve good energy performance without relying on overseas products and supply chains. And as such, it has the potential to influence the way a lot of local buildings meet these higher energy targets. In terms of building siting, on the left side, you can see the current tower spans the entire block north to south, and the western portion of the site is covered by a parking structure. In our proposal, the tower shape is more square and centrally located, which opens up views east to west across the site. It also improves the interface for the residents to the east at 1420 West Georgia Street. In addition to the Northwest Plaza, the retail advantage along Georgia has expanded. And then on the right side, we can see an elevation diagram that shows how the height of the existing building is marked by the mid-tower amenity space. In terms of the mid-tower amenity space, this level incorporates another layer of planters and planting, but in a location that's easily accessed for maintenance. It also provides a communal space for renters and condo owners, a place for all of them to meet, and they can all enjoy the views. And I'll introduce our landscape architect, David Stoico.
Thanks, Tazo. We really loved the architect's initial ideas, applied this to the landscape design as a Pacific Northwest theme, which is really realized through the landscape materials and the plants, and especially the feature tree. Next slide, please. The plaza at the corner is a really key feature. It's stepping down with the grade, and a series of spaces are created for public use, and is a potential for public art. Next, please. The feature tree is envisioned as a specimen Douglas fir, that has really given the space, soil to grow very large, and will sit in a native plant garden. The heavily planted landscape is combined with urban elements and provides a really green setting for the tower. And there's amenity for the residents and a visual benefit for the neighborhood. Next, please. The mid-tower amenity creates a series of useful spaces with a lush planted edge. As Tazo said, it'll be, or I think Dean said, it'll be at the same height as the previous heritage building. But it's got a very planted edge that should be very visible from around. Next, please. The tower green roof provides further opportunity for native plants to grow, and helps achieve sustainable stormwater goals, along with the other levels. At all levels, we have a project that has a strong landscape expression. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. As I mentioned previously, we are here, as well as Donald Luxton, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for the presentation. So this is the opportunity now for council to ask questions of either staff or the applicant team, and again, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant. So I do see a couple of councillors on the queue, and councillor Weep, go ahead, you're first.
Yeah, no, I really liked that urban forest theme. My first one's on the CACs, recognizing that we have two buildings with similar zoning from DD CD1, six FSR to about 14, one providing 41, almost 42 million, and this one only providing 17 million in CACs. And the West End Plan talks about, this is a property where the CACs are to help fund the community amenity package, and not only the community, but council voted on. So can you talk about the 23.7 million differential between the two projects? And is that the waiver we're giving to get the 162 market rental?
So councillor Weep, this question is for staff? Just confirm.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mario Weep with Real Estate Services. This particular development is being proposed on a relatively high-value site. The current zoning does allow for 6.0 floor space ratio of residential density. In addition, the proposal does include 162 rental units. So it is starting off on a relatively higher value.
But we're still only getting $54 per square foot from the $121,000 at six to the $14.14 at 286. So can you talk about how we've seen upwards of 200, 250 per square foot for a regular market, and this one we're only seeing 54? I think the design's great, and I think the building looks beautiful. I'm just wondering if we're getting the amenities that the public's looking for. So you can just talk through that process a little bit more.
Sure. In this valuation approach, we have included 162 rental units, which typically, well, relatively speaking, have a lower value than the strata condo values. By inputting this into the pro forma valuation, it does yield a lower comparative CAC.
Do we, are we able to quantify that? So can we tell the public that we made the decision to make 102 rental units, and so we will be waiving 24-odd million dollars as a CAC? Is that... Because I think we need to demonstrate recognizing that the plan states for this project to deliver CACs and not rentals. So can you talk about how we can showcase that offset? And do you have a valuation of what we devalued the property at to go to rental?
I think in some cases, that may be possible. I do think in certain cases like this one, I think that is very difficult to do, because we would have to establish a hypothetical base case scenario where we would be looking at a potential all-strata development, which was not a part of the application.
Okay, even though that would follow the community plan?
Yes, currently, the proposal right now is for a mix of strata and rental. So that is how we review it, based on the merits of proposal.
Okay, but the community plan stated for this project to be strata. Is that correct?
Res zoning planner, that's right. So the expectation of the plan is a cash CAC.
Okay, so if the plan outlined a CAC, it might be nice in the future if we, if that's the stated community goal that's in the community plan, if we could have that valuation, recognizing that it is a trade-off we're making here that is outside the community plan. That's all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you councillor Weep. Councillor Domannato, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, a couple of questions for staff and a couple of questions for the applicant, maybe starting with staff. If I could just get clarification around the application of the TRPP to 100 of the 162 rental, existing rental units? Is that right? Did I get that right? There's...
So there's 162 units in the building, and of the 162, 100 would be, are covered, 100 of the tenancies are covered under the policy.
Okay. And the other 60, there's a policy rationale for why they're not?
Yeah, they could have either moved in following the deadline for the application or there's other reasons why, yeah.
Okay. And then, sorry, just certainly back to the questions that councillor Weep was asking about public benefits, but slightly different. Could staff just confirm that the CAC contributions that would come from this development would be going towards things like the West End Community Centre and Library? We're just in the midst of having that initial engagement around the redevelopment there, including King George Secondary and Spencer. Is that where some of those dollars would likely flow, is to support that renewal?
Yeah, they would be allocated as per the public benefits strategy, and so that is one of the projects that is included within the public benefits strategy. Correct?
Okay, thank you. And then to the applicant, can you confirm with this proposal that with the, I think there was nine levels, like at line levels of underground parking? Is that going to include EV, electric vehicle charging infrastructure for that parking?
Yes, it would. It would apply to the current parking requirements, so that would be 100% electric vehicle charging.
Okay. And then, just going back to, I think I heard that on the 21st level, the amenity spaces, you've got trees and greening there. But looking at the, and again, I guess just a design, a mock-up of the plaza, is there any opportunity to have more trees and more coverage at the street level? That's come up quite a bit in the last number of months in terms of the heat dome, and it seemed a bit scant in terms of trees. I saw a lot of concrete, and I'm just curious if that's a conversation, maybe it's a question for staff and for the applicant. I'm not sure who would answer that one.
Yeah, I can take that. I mean, that's definitely something that we can look at. There would be a number, there's a number of design additions that came out of our design panel, and so it's something if staff would be okay with that for us to take into consideration as we move forward. I think that the refinement of the ground plan is something that we still have some work to do on.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Domannato. Councillor Carr, you have the floor.
Yep, thanks so much. I'm going to continue on the questioning, too, that was started by councillor Weep. And I just want to get verification from staff. Councillor, we've talked about a 23.7 million differential in CACs because of the decision to replace 162 rental units. Seth, can you please confirm that that is, that basically we can understand a drop in CACs of that amount to basically be the kind of amount, let's say, of forgone CACs by the decision to go with rental units instead of all-strata?
This is Mario Weep with Real Estate Services. Sorry, the $23 million gap was compared to the next proposal?
Right.
Okay, I do, I don't think that we can say that that is the value of the 162 rental units, because there are two different developments.
Two different developments, okay.
Would be subject to different, I guess, evaluations for their generic site.
Okay. So ask staff, do you attach a value, given that this corridor was intended under the West End Plan to be the corridor where there was an expectation of cash CACs for the public benefits strategy for the West End Plan, given that the corridor was intended to be strata development rather than rental development? But in this case, this project has rental units replacing current rental units on site. Do you evaluate the CAC value of that?
We would not evaluate the CAC value of the rental units compared to a strata development. We only value and review the application on its merit of the proposal. So currently, it's proposed as a condo and rental mixed use, and that's how we would review.
Okay. Although I think that probably the public in the West End may wish to know that kind of information, even though you didn't review it, I'm just thinking, thinking about the public buy-in into the West End Plan originally, because it's almost nine years ago now. To the applicant, I'm very intrigued by your technological solution around sustainable technologies and breaking the thermal barrier in order to do that. I'm wondering if that technology that you've developed is, I think you've said it was unique, like no one else is doing it. So perhaps you could confirm that? And also relay whether or not there has been interest from other architects and developers around this particular technology that you're pioneering?
Yeah, a great question. So to answer your second question first, when the application went forward to design panel and open house, we did actually get a number of architects and people in the industry reaching out and asking us about it. In those discussions and through some of the research that we've done, we haven't seen an application of separated balconies with thermally insulated slabs between the balcony and slab edge applied in a project of this scale. You know, externally supported balconies is not something new, but on a project of this scale on a concrete high-rise, I think at the end of the, it's never really happened before, from our understanding, and one of the reasons for that, the ongoing development of the energy performance standards that we have in the city hasn't really required projects of this scale to do this anywhere around yet. And so that's what's precipitated this.
What were the implications for the cost of construction for using this technique?
It's a good question. We have done some deep dives in with the forming contractors and manufacturers. We are still looking at a high-performance, like double or triple glaze system, depending on the sign. So the cost discount is not a lot in this first project, as well as due to the fact that we had a prototype here. So what I mean by prototype is that we are going to be doing mock-ups of this design of site.
That is councillor Carr's time. Sorry about that, but I will encourage, perhaps other councillors will pick up on that, or that can be asked subsequently. Councillor Bro, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thanks. I want to follow up on a number of the questions that have been asked, and I'm wondering, first of all, the number around the units that qualify for the TRPP being just 100 of that 162 seems low to me relative to other projects that we've seen, and so I'm interested to just better understand if that's low, why that's low, and why so many of those units don't qualify? Was there a big turnover recently of units? More information on that front.
You bet. Councillor, this is Angel Clark. I'm the housing planner working on this project. So there are 162 units in the building. At the time of the rezoning application, 146 of those units were rented. And so of those 146, there was 100 that were eligible under the city's TRPP. So that means at the time of that application, those tenants had been living in the unit for at least a year. At this time now, a number of the tenants who are eligible have moved out, but still, those 100 eligible tenancies will be compensated based on the 2019 most current tenant relocation protection policy. And so I think that in a large building, that's, it does seem like a reasonable number of tenants who would be eligible. I think there is quite a bit of turnover we do see in buildings downtown, so.
So 42 of those units being within a year doesn't indicate a kind of high level of turnover prior to submitting an application?
So sorry, at the time of the rezoning application, there was 146 of those 162 that were tenanted, and only 100 of those were eligible. that were tenanted, and only 100 of those were eligible under the policy.
Yeah, so I guess I'm trying to understand 46 of those units then were within a year of tenancies? That seems, I'm just trying to understand if that, if it was the case, as we sometimes hear on projects, that there is sort of a practices in place that encourage a turnover of tenants before an application like that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't speak to that. We do, we do get that information on each tenancy and doing an evaluation. There is a, there is a letter that does go out to all those tenants, whether they're eligible or not, at the time of application notifying them if they are. And so if there was kind of any kind of issues, that would have probably, we probably would have heard about it at that time. Yeah.
Okay, and can you just remind us what the current rents are in the building and what the new rents would be for the rental units?
Yeah, you bet. So the average rents for the one beds as of March of this year was approximately 1,600 for a one bed and approximately 2,100 for a two-bed. There's only one three-bed in the existing building, which was a higher rent, 3,800. And the range, so it ranges from about 1,300 to 2,500 for the one and two beds. So that's existing building. In the new building, those will be at market rents. So we are, do not know what those rents will be. What we do do at the, for the tenant relocation policy, at time of occupancy permit, the applicant will submit, letting us know what those right of first refusal rents will be for those applicants who will be returning. And that was rents will be at 20% below the market price for the, for the unit. So at that point in the process, that's when we know what those rents will be for those returning tenants.
Okay, and I have one other question about the West End Community Plan. Were we, we have some sense of the total CACs we need to complete that plan? I assume were we anticipating a higher amount of CACs from this project? It was all strata in order to meet that need? And are we able to meet that through estimates of CACs from other projects? Or are we, are we going to be needing to extend the timeline on some of those promised public benefits or cut back on them if the CACs are lower for this project than expected?
Just 15 seconds.
Counselor Boyle, this is Nick Danford here, rezoning planner. We're going to have to circle back with you on the answer, given the time that we have. Apologies.
Okay, no problem. I am out of time anyway, so I'd appreciate an answer later this evening if possible. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Boyle. Counselor Swanson, you're up.
To the applicant, is this going to be a pet-free building?
Great question. So to answer your question, it won't be a pet-free building. We encourage pets in our rental buildings, so we're encouraged to do that. And just while I have a second to address one of the previous councilors' comments about turnover.
Could you back up on the pets there? It won't be a pet-free building because it's a rental building? Is that what you said?
Yeah, we like pets in our rental buildings. We encourage people to have pets, so there would be pets involved and allowed in the project.
So it will be a, oh, okay, okay.
Pet-friendly.
Pet-friendly.
Yeah. And just going back to Counselor Boyle's question.
It is, Counselor, I just want to interject, and I'll give Counselor Swanson a few more seconds. So this is Counselor Swanson's time, so it's up to her if she'd like to ask.
I agree that it's okay to answer Boyle's question.
Okay.
Sorry, just on the question of turnover, great question. So just to give you some history, we actually purchased the property in late 2017, 2018 from a REIT that previously owned it. And when we inherited the property, we had an immediate high level of turnover. And so we were trying to address that through capital expenditures in the last number of years to try to get our occupancy stabilized. Essentially, we've had almost 20% to 30% turnover annually because it's quite a high, it's a quite frantic building, quite frankly. People come, they stay for a year or two, and they leave. That was the methodology that the previous landlord had to basically, you know, keep rents at a certain level. And when we inherited the building, essentially, a lot of those tenants did leave, and we were stuck with trying to find new tenants for some of those. So it does look like a lot of turnover, but that does explain essentially what happened, where a large portion of the building has not been there for more than a year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. Counselor Hardwick, please go ahead.
Thanks. My questions are to staff. Starting with, the obvious one is how does this project meet the housing needs of the West End? Because this, you know, in terms of the West End Community Plan, how does this meet the needs of the West End?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Hardwick. Nick Danford, rezoning planner. So in the, this might answer Counselor Boyle's question as well. In the public benefit strategy of the West End, there is anticipation for some secured market rental units. And so this is responding in that way in terms of providing that type of tenure.
So how does pulling down a solid 22-story, 162-solid rental unit building benefit the rental community in the West End?
That's an excellent question. I mean, there's costs associated with retaining that building, given the age of the building. I'm sure that the applicant can speak more to the costs that are needed to retain a building of that size and age.
Sorry, it doesn't seem very old to me. Buildings from within a lifetime, especially when constructed like that.
Apologies.
So what I'm getting at is, you know, again, we're looking at demolition of a fully functioning building. So I want to really get to that point is, you know, this is going to creation, create a mountain of demolition waste and a lot of concrete and fossil fuels, which don't meet with the Greenest City concept and it contradicts our climate emergency declaration. It's not consistent with our goals of housing affordability. So how does it fit?
Can I steer you to a question, Counselor Hardwick?
That was the question, is given these conditions, how does this fit with, you know, our objectives? How does this help us with our goal of housing affordability?
Thanks again for the question, Counselor Hardwick. This, as I mentioned in the presentation, this, you know, market rental does provide an alternative to some folks with regards to homeownership, and so it does serve a certain population.
You just established that you're taking a 162 affordable rental.
Just if I could jump in here, I think you asked the applicant if we could maybe respond. I think the answer to that question is they aren't affordable rental, they are market rental, they're rented for what is market in the area. And I would also address that the building isn't very young. The building is in, it's in terrible shape, to be frank. It's over, almost 75 years old. Seismically, a big problem in an earthquake situation. We looked for months with staff and third-party consultants on ways that it could potentially be retained to kind of answer that exact question that you asked. And basically, due to the cast-in-place concrete form of construction, there's no way to, other than building a building with ceiling heights under seven feet high, to actually seismically bring this project up to be safe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that answer. Sorry, I've got limited time, so I'm going to move on to the next piece, which is the view cone. The tower would project 60 feet into the Queen Elizabeth view cone. How do we reconcile that?
And that's for staff. Counselor Hardwick?
Good evening. Good evening, Counselor. This is Carl Stanford speaking. I note that it does project into the view cone. It is, however, facilitated under the higher building policy. That was view cone protection, projection into the Queen Elizabeth view cone, 3.2.1.
Wow.
Only that view cone.
So this is not height restricted. That's an anomaly under the view cone. And so I guess that's a larger question council's going to have to resolve is whether we're going to continue to consider view cones as being important. Just switching back to the West End Neighbors Community Plan, when do we expect, is there going to be any wind-up for this report to be published for residents? Because it ties to this, this and the next application. Staff? West End Community Plan shared with residents?
Just 10 seconds.
Question, Counselor Hardwick, Nick Danford here. So staff intend on reporting back on the progress towards the West End Community Plan in the next little while.
Great, thank you, Counselor Hardwick. That is your time, but we will have chance for us another round later. Counselor Dijonova, go ahead.
Thanks so much. I have some questions about the life of the building too. I noted in the referral report that the building, the current building, was built in 1956, which would put it at 65 years of age. So just from my experience and knowledge, kind of of knowing, just from the development world, when a building starts to cost money and you need to replace entire systems, I'm wondering if the rents you're currently charging would be sustainable in the current building right now, considering the fact that you are at 65 years of age with the current building? And if that in any way had played into your decision to renew or come forward with this application?
Yeah, good question. I think when we looked at the building, one of the issues was, and apologize for my mouth, I'll fly there. You are correct on the building. The capital expenditures that would need to go into the building to keep it occupiable are incredibly significant. And that is one of the challenges that we have for with this building. Although it is a big old building that will need to be demolished as part of this application to keep the existing rental rates, you know, there are a lot of expenditures.
Counselor Dijonova, do you have a follow-up?
I actually lost the answer to the question there. I'm not sure if it was my feed or what it was, but I heard most of it to almost the end. I did have a couple of follow-up questions. Would we be talking about renovations so significant? Or I suppose looking at changes that would be so significant to maintenance the building that you would be replacing entire heating systems or boiler systems? Can you remind me? I just can't find it right now in the report. Is this currently being heated by gas? Are you looking at different systems that also fall under our Greenest City policies?
It is actually via gas, and there really is, it's incredibly cost prohibitive to make any sort of conversion. I think we actually have looked at that in more recent years. And the other, the other component here is when we talk to staff about the opportunities for this site, you know, as Nick had mentioned, you know, we are faced with kind of a bit of a dilemma where, you know, we can look at redeveloping this property and provide the benefit of replacing 162 units with this application. Or, quite frankly, one of our other concerns is exactly what we're talking about right now, is the capital cost. And so one of the other pathways we could go down was a development permit application under the existing zoning, which in that case wouldn't replace the 162 units. So that was, you know, those additional capital costs that are being layered on top of this project kind of ensure that we look at that other alternative. And so that was one of the discussions.
Okay, thanks so much. I'm going to try and squeeze this last question and also to the applicant, looking at what you currently have, has this also, will this allow more family-friendly units and more family-friendly living?
Yeah, a great question, actually. One of the things that's, you may have caught it, and this is why I asked the question. Typically balconies are around 12%. As part of this prototype design, we're up over 20% balcony space, which is a technical thing that provides solar shading, but it really provides more outdoor space for families. And one of the things that's also important to note is that that's not, you know, prescriptive to the top or the bottom of the building. It's all the way up and down the building. And so the rental homes, as well as sale homes, have larger outdoor spaces for people to gather.
Counselor Dijonova, any further questions?
Just one more further question, just one more question, very quickly. If not, I'll move for a second round. But just wondering also, this adds to market, right? So we're talking about market rental. We're talking about market. Market housing still, for some people, is affordable housing in our city. So wondering if, you know, considering what you have to do in the TIPP, does that all plan to your pro forma? If you didn't have to do all of that, which I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't, that actually increases your costs. So you have to fit within the city's policy? Is that how you've come to this?
Counselor Dijonova, I'm sorry, that is your time.
Oh, I'll move for a second round then.
Actually, no need to do that. We do have that as a matter of procedure, and we will do that after we hear from the public.
I cannot speak with the applicant, though, in the second round.
You cannot speak with the applicant after. There's just one opportunity for questions of the applicant. That's correct.
And that's why I'd be moving for a second round now.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that?
Second.
Counselor Hardwick seconded. I'll try this as a verbal vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Very none? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Dijonova.
Understanding sort of that the pro forma really is a number of calculations that you have to put together to fit within city policy and looking at the capital costs and the option of maintenance and renewing the building at 65 years of age and what that would look like down the road versus what you're doing now. And I see all of the policies it meets. I don't need to belabor that in my question. To the applicant, I'm wondering, I mean, do the city's policies, like, you know, the TIPP, you know, your obligations to the current renters, do those impact costs in your pro forma? And is that what's bringing us to the costs that we see today that some of my colleagues have asked about? Trying to be very general, to be very short here, appreciating council allowing me the extra question, but hoping you can answer that for me.
Sure. I think I understand what you're trying to ask. So I'll answer it in a pretty straightforward way. So right now, as I mentioned earlier, the building really doesn't work from a feasibility perspective, retain it for many different reasons. And then additionally, the cost to, you know, to run through the TRPP process is obviously a cost of the project. However, you know, it does get rolled into the CAC negotiation, and we do, you know, look at it realistically. So, you know, is it a massive, significant cost that makes certain decisions unfeasible? I don't know if I can say that, but it is a cost of the project. And I would say when we started this process with staff and looked at the base zoning and had a conversation and kind of had a, had a discussion about whether or not placing rental was the right option here, and staff and ourselves agreed that it would be, took their direction on that, you know, that obviously factors into the, to the cost. So, you know, replacing the rental is obviously a battle front.
Thanks very much. Really appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Dijonova. Counselor Boyle, go ahead.
Thanks. I just have one question to the applicant that I ran out of time for before. I'm wondering if the proposed new building would be hooked up to gas or if the plan is to make it fully electric?
You know, sorry, for in-suite cooktops? Is that what you're mentioning or the whole?
Well, largely for heating and hot water, but cooktops or fireplaces as well.
At early days, I'm looking at that, but given the tenny and crew requirements, we're looking at, I believe, we're looking at source systems for water or hot water consumption. And I think within the suites, again, it's too soon to tell.
Sorry, you are cutting out a little bit. I wonder if you could speak closer to your mic and try that again, please?
Yeah, right now, the plan is to move away from gas within the building and look at rental, having electric cooktops. But I think depending on what the market demands, we would be looking at gas cooktops for the, for sale component. And then the building systems, given that we're looking at step four, almost step four of the ZEB policy, you know, we do have to look at other forms of heating for hot water and day-to-day heat pumps.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's all for me.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Counselor Swanson, go ahead. Counselor Swanson? You may be muted, Counselor Swanson.
Sorry.
Let me see if I can help here. There you are. Great.
Just following up on what Counselor Boyle said, the city is trying to reduce. Just following up on what Councilor Boyle said, the city is trying to reduce use of gas in order to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And if you put a new building in where you're using gas and it lasts for another 60 or 100 years, that's not gonna, that's gonna be bad, right? Is there any way we could convince you not to do that?
I would say that the majority of our heating system for the project, upwards of 80 plus percentage of the project would not be using gas. So it would be electric or air sourced pumps. And so in comparison to a gas fired boiler system that you would typically see, perhaps installed with something with a lower energy performance standard, it is a massive reduction in gas usage.
Okay, I have a question for staff too. What percentage of the amenities in the West End Community Plan have we already got the funds for? And how much, how much more CAC money do we need to build out the amenities that are in the plan?
Thanks for the question, Councilor Swanson, Nick Danford, rezoning planner. So if you have a look at Appendix F in the report, it does give an update on the tracking around the implementation and provides you with an idea of some of the projects that have been completed as per the Public Benefits Strategy.
Could you give a rough summary for folks that don't have access to that appendix?
Sure, yeah. So as far as the housing goes, 72 social housing units have been delivered, as well as 577 secured market rental units. Looks like a childcare facility has been delivered, or ten spaces at a childcare facility, as well as numerous public realm upgrades, such as Jim Diva Plaza, the Aquatic Center, Ferry Dock, and so on.
So we're supposed to have 1,600 social housing units, but we have 72?
So I'm just looking here. So there's two, there's two points here. So there's 72 social housing units and then 236. So it leads me to believe that there would be approximately 300 social housing units that have been delivered.
Out of the 1,600?
Yep.
Okay, and then we have culture. And, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Swanson. Councilor Carr, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks so much, Chair. And I am also very interested in the notion of the heating by gas. It was raised by earlier councillors, but there regarding that, in terms of heating, space heating versus stoves, is there anything that you have planned in terms of, I guess, ensuring that the space heating is not by gas? So the heat pumps, or what would be your other alternatives beyond heat pumps that would not be gas or fossil fuels?
Counselor, I was able to just confirm with our team question there, and did confirm that all of our space heating and hot water heating for the building is electric. So I misspoke earlier. So just the.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you. I'm glad that you verified that. Good. And you are, I think, by answering one of the previous questions, it seems indicating that you would still contemplate potential gas stoves, is that correct? Or gas cooktops?
It really is too soon to tell. I can say with high level of certainty that the rental building would not be for gas cooktops. Really, you know, we're discussing with our marketing team and sales team, could gas versus induction for the condo side things? And I would say the market is starting to trend more towards perhaps having induction as an option. So by the time we bring this project forward, that is a high chance that we'll be talking about that and maybe looking at that as an alternative.
Yeah, I have induction. I love it, for the record. But anyway, thank you for the answer to that. And I'm very pleased about the gas, space heating and hot water heating, the non-gas spacing and hot water heating. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilor Carr. And Councilor Degenova, you did have time left. Did you have a follow up question?
I do. And I won't talk about my own stove, but what I will do is I will ask, ask a question. I'm wondering if it was a consideration to have gas cooktops, would the applicant, and I guess it's a question for the applicant, would you consider renewable natural gas, which is an option under Fortis PC?
That's definitely something that we can consider. It would factor into our energy, building energy involved in the project. So it could be something you could look at, factor. We've looked at securing that on previous projects and have gone through the process recently. And so it's something that we would look at doing, but one of the things that unfortunately we're not able to commit to is that they have an oversubscription, it seems like, in customers, and they're not able to provide the renewable actual gas to all the people that are demanding it. So we could explore it. That being said, I think it's not something we can commit to, because I'm not sure if Fortis can commit to all the required customers that are having knocking on their door.
Of course, but this is something that you would explore if your sales and marketing teams did advise you to explore gas cooktops. Is that correct?
Yes, in general terms, I think we can explore that. I think the other thing that's a factor here is, you know, we can explore that and commit to exploring that for the rent component that we will continue to own. Unfortunately, as soon as the project is stratified, it is kind of outside of our hands. And should Strata negotiate different terms with Fortis, that's a little bit outside of our control.
Of course, completely understand. Thanks for answering my question. That's all.
Great, thanks, Councilor Degenova. Okay, council, we will now move to hear from the public. We do have a number of speakers registered this evening. And I'm first going to call the first speaker, Speaker number one, David Putneyak.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm hoping you can hear me?
We can. You have five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is David Putneyak, and I'm the CEO of Landlord BC. Our organization represents owners and managers of rental housing across BC. And on behalf of our 3,300 members, I am pleased to join you this evening to offer our strong support for this exciting projects, project, which will provide the downtown core with 162 new, safe, secure, and sustainable rental homes for decades to come. Equally importantly, when this project is completed, it'll create 193 market condo units to provide additional homeownership options. This mix of housing tenure will, in our view, further diversify and enhance the immediate neighborhood. The site, as you know, currently has 162 rental units, which the applicant will replace. As you are also aware, under existing zoning, the site could be redeveloped with a strata titled Building Only, where none of the existing rental units would be replaced. As a strong advocate for the replacement of existing rental on a one to one basis, we are very pleased that the proponent is voluntarily advancing the project on the basis of the one to one replacements of the existing rental. This is a win for the community. We are also pleased to learn that the tenant relocation and protection policy, TRP policy, for eligible tenants applies to this application. As more and more of our existing rental stock is reaching the end of its functional life, renewal is necessary to maintain the health, safety, and resiliency of the overall rental stock. At the same time, we feel it is important to support tenants by helping to mitigate the impacts of displacement resulting from redevelopment. In the context of this project, it is our understanding that the proponent must provide at a minimum at least four months free, four months free rent based on length of tenancy, a flat rate payment towards living expenses, and assistance finding three alternate accommodation options that best meet the tenant's identified priorities. Eligible tenants may exercise a right of first refusal to return to one of the replacement market rental units in the new building with a 20% discount off starting market rents. In our view, this TRP policy is both fair and equitable, and will provide excellent protections for impacted tenants. While reviewing this application, we noticed that this project will have over 700 spots for bike parking compared with 300 spots for parking cars. This is fantastic, but somewhat startling, somewhat startling, pardon me. So we decided to dig deeper to better understand how this came about. It all made sense when we learned of all the neighborhood amenities within walking distance of the subject site. This project takes the 15 minute city concept to a whole other level. In terms of parks, we have Stanley Park, Arena Square Park, Harbor Green Park. Cultural and community spaces include the West End Community Center, Cole Harbour Community Center, Joe Forte Library, and the Performing Arts Lodge of Vancouver. Result of childcare in the immediate vicinity of this site too, including Little Ray Kids Club and Poole Corner Daycare. Finally, the site is located approximately 800 meters from the Burrard Skytrain Station and on frequent bus, on a frequent bus route to North Shore and downtown. So you see who needs cars when you have the best neighborhood amenities outside your front door and you tend to walk the Skytrain. This justifies having 700 parking spots and only 300 spots for cars. In closing, I would simply like to add that I know that I don't need to remind you that when considering this application, your focus needs to be on the broader community. Unfortunately, there will no doubt be members of the community who will oppose this project. While it is important that you listen to them, please understand, understand that increasingly at public hearings such as this one, we are learning that voice, their voices are not truly representative of the broader community, but rather a vocal minority with their own self-interest in mind. On behalf of Landlord BC, I respectfully ask that you all say yes to this application, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, David. You do have questions from Councilor Carr? Councilor Carr, go ahead. Councilor Carr, I believe you're muted.
Apologies, that was a double mute. Thank you so much for coming to speak. And I am very interested in a question that arose previous to your speaking that you may have an answer to, and that is, when does a building reach the end of its quote "functional" life? You did say that many of them are. I certainly, as a resident of the West End, have seen many buildings older than 1956 buildings. But how do you assess that? And is a building built in 1956 kind of on that verge of quote, "end of functional life"? How do you value replacing it versus trying to renovate in order to extend its life?
Sure, that's a great question. You know, to put an exact number of years, let's say, you know, age 65, 67, whatever, that a building, you know, is, you know, at its, at the end of its functional life is obviously, you know, not something that one can necessarily do. To your point there, obviously are buildings that are older than 65 or 67 years old in the city. The, when we say end of its functional life, it's a combination of factors. What is obviously the original building date, the age of the building? But then what it boils down to is looking at all the existing mechanical systems, the state of the building in terms of seismic deficiencies, looking at the individual units. You know, are they, are they providing, you know, good windows, good ventilation? You know, are they up to sort of modern standards in terms of, you know, design and use of space? And really, you know, from an owner's perspective, when there's a whole series of analysis that they do, and if there is a point at which one says this, that this building has in fact reached the end of its functional life, the end of its economic life, and it's not delivering the necessary units, the cost, the input cost to get the building updated would be prohibitive. And really, the building that you would end up with is not going to have the same superior technologies as West Group has described for you today. It's not going to be as resilient, even with whatever size of updates, upgrades you do. And so it's a combination of factors, but you ask an excellent question. I know it's one that you've asked me before when I've been speaking to council. But, but, you know, it's, there's a, there's a whole range of criteria, and definitely, one is the date the building was built, the age of the current building, but it's a little more complex than simply that number.
Now, you have been involved in partnering with the city in terms of actual retrofitting of buildings. And are those of varied ages? Are you find, so this is a 1956 building. Are there particular facets to a building that end up being more costly in terms of the cost of a retrofit and a renovate, a major renovation? So that helps make decisions?
Sure. I mean, again, let's just take, you know, one of our, you know, sort of classic purpose-built rental buildings, you know, three, four story walk-up that was built 50, 60 years ago or 70 years ago. The reality is that most of those buildings are worth nothing, and it's the land that's worth anything. And so when you start looking, and furthermore, you know, a three, four story building is simply not delivering the number of units that we need in the rental housing universe within the city. So when you start looking at a building like that, and you're correct, we have worked with the city, and we're going to be continuing work going forward, and you start looking at a building like that, and, and, you know, what, what the input costs will be to upgrade it for energy efficiency, you know, seismic upgrades, et cetera, et cetera. When you start adding up all those input costs, plus the destructions of tenants, et cetera, et cetera, the numbers simply do not work. The economics are simply not there. And so this is where the.
That is Councilor Carr, that is Councilor Carr's time. Sorry for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carr, and thank you, Speaker. You don't have any further questions, but thank you for taking the time this evening.
Yeah, have a nice evening. Thanks.
You too. Speaker number two, Maximilian Lepur.
Good afternoon, council, and everyone in attendance. Thank you for having me call in today and be able to voice my thoughts. I'm calling today to voice my strong support for West Group's proposed development at 1450 West Georgia. Right off the bat, I would echo a lot of the points that the previous speaker has made, but I would also add some other thoughts that I had. So primarily, I support this project as it will be an inclusive development that'll combine mixed use rental and strata development in a highly transit oriented neighborhood. And this development will ensure these kind of policies come to fruition. I'm a strong supporter of more rental development in our city. Our rental stocks are extremely low in Vancouver, and we have a record breaking vacancy rate at or below 1% in certain neighborhoods. So any development that increases our rental stock, I would support. And this one from West Group does. And it's supporting this by, you know, replacing the amount of rental units it is gonna build in a new development. I would also add that I appreciate that development has a minimum of 35% rental for family. I'd note that there's 43 two bedrooms and 16 three bedroom rental units, which is found in the appendix age of your council's report. In addition to this, there's the public art contributions that are being paid. The CACs are being paid of 8.9 million, which is a large number. I would argue that the building itself is a contribution to the neighborhood and community. And I'm very pleased architecturally with the design of this building. It's going to add to our skyline and our urban livability. And that's especially seeing, you know, people walkability of our city. You know, the developer is doing a setback for putting in trees and a park at entrance and that grade, but to allow people to walk our streets. I would also add that, you know, during construction, there's going to be 1,400 jobs from this building, directly or indirectly, which will enable a strong and resilient economy as we recover from COVID. And with that, you know, these jobs are going to foster local industry. West Group has taken the initiative by supporting local industry and knowledge with their, you know, firmal engineering. with their, you know, thermal engineering, what they're doing on balconies, as was reported to council today. So these green building policies, I know councillor Hardwick has argued against some of these issues stating opposite, where it does seem to be a green building or doing sustainable policies. And they're going to ensure we have a resilient economy in Vancouver. So for these reasons, I urge you to vote in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any questions for you, but thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three, Arsalan Shagan.
Speaker three is not on the line.
Okay. Speaker number four, Edward Benton Evans.
Speaker four is not on the line either.
Okay, thank you. Speaker number five, Bailey Miazga.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. My name is Bailey Miazga, and I am a resident of Vancouver, and I'm here to offer a few words of support for the project at 1450 West Georgia Street. So to start off, I will mention that I am a renter, and I appreciate that West Group had sought the assistance of a tenant relocation expert to ensure that the renters are taken care of, as well as choosing to replace the rental on-site. I work at one of the larger educational institutions that has a campus in our downtown core. And time and time again, I hear from faculty and colleagues and students of their commute to school, often from outside of Vancouver, are taking the better part of an hour. And I think we can all agree that the addition of 355 new units would ease the burden of finding suitable housing significantly. This location is well-suited to house downtown workers and students and would be a timely addition as we welcome future large-scale employers like Amazon to our city. Thank you for your time, and I hope you vote in favor of this proposal tonight.
Great. Thank you, Bailey. You don't have any questions from council, but thank you for your comments. Okay, speaker number six, Alan Featherston Howe.
Good evening, mayor and council, or acting mayor and council. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening. Go ahead. You have five minutes to speak to council.
Yes, thank you. I won't repeat many of the other, many of the good aspects of this project that are very positive, such as the new ideas and the new technology, et cetera, the plan, et cetera. But what I want to really emphasize is the family housing. The family housing, over the years, when rental projects or condominium projects have been developed, there's never been talk much about family rentals that have two or three bedrooms, because that's really important for the family, and too often, we've kind of forgotten about them in our planning because we think of, you know, single people, or we think of empty nesters, but we forget the people who traditionally have owned houses. But unfortunately, due to the economic circumstances right now, the crazy real estate prices, they have to rent, and we need to provide more space for them and for families. And in all projects that go forward from now on, I think that the council should look into that to make sure that all these new developments definitely have more family housing. It's a great project. It looks beautiful. It's very interesting. And I just want to, again, reiterate the idea of the family housing. It's very, very important for the city in order to keep children and families in the city to make it lively. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Alan. You don't have any questions for council, but your points were obviously clear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we do have additional speakers on the line in addition to your list. I'm going to call speaker seven now, who's Claire Lomas. And Claire-
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, can I just ask you to identify if you're a resident or not of Vancouver, and then you have five minutes to speak to council.
Hi, hi, council. I'm back. I am indeed a resident of Vancouver, a resident in the West End, and I am in opposition to this development. I'd like to carry on a couple of points that were made by council earlier today. After nearly 10 years of the West End Community Plan, we're well overdue for an implementation report to find out what these density trade-offs have done to our neighborhood, especially in the terms of affordability. So I wanted to actually zero in on page 14 of this referral report, where it talks and actually lists what the market rentals are for the area and what the rates are currently for 1450 West Georgia. So I think it's an important point that while the developer is willingly doing a one-to-one rental replacement, I think that highlights a failure in our current policy and that maybe DD zone properties should also be included into the O D P plan, similar to has been considered for C2 zone properties and whatnot. But I would like to point out that while other speakers have said that it's important to have family-sized housing, the market rate for a three-bedroom for a new downtown building is $4,432 a month, which means to rent, you need to afford that at 30% of income, you need to have a household income of $177,000. So traditionally, those are the people that are supposed to be in the owner category anyways. And so I worry about shifting the definition of those people who would like to be owners, keeping in mind that the median renter income in Vancouver is closer to 50K. So I think the residents of the West End are deserving of finding out how many units have already been approved under this plan. Last, I've been working with the West End Neighborhood Network, and they had pointed out that the Parks Board was able to pull together a document which had the number of units that were either in progress or under development for the West End. And according to this WEN article, they estimated that nearly 6,000 units have already been approved in the West End alone, and there's about 4,000 in progress, and that this is for a plan that's supposed to house 7,500 new units over 30 years. So I'm not sure what the rush is. I do find it rather interesting that the West End Community Plan was implemented in 2013, which was right before the kickoff and the exponential rise in the cost of housing. So I do wonder if these sorts of density policies have been adding to the land inflation, which has been an underlying cost. And that one of the goals of the West End Community Plan was to increase affordable housing, not just housing. So it's with those broader comments in line that I oppose this development and that the residents deserve a report on what has been happening under this plan already, and as other councillors have pointed out, what has been done with the CACs that were promised to improve our neighborhood, what infrastructure is being done to support all of this density, because in the last 10 years that I've been here, it's just getting more and more congested. Crime is going up, and I happen to live in one of those 1950, 1960 buildings, 12-story, that has undergone renovations. So I personally find it offensive that people are suggesting that seismically upgraded buildings is more important than actually having a roof over my head. What's going to be the carbon imprint if I have to be outside because I can't afford a place to live? So that's my comments for now, and yeah, I'm back.
Great, thank you, Claire. You do have questions from councillor Swanson. So councillor Swanson-
Great.
No problem. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you would think that there is an issue with the city wanting stratas so we can get community amenity contributions, so we can have things like childcare and art centers? But having that at the same time, the stratas reduce the affordability in the West End? Is this what you were thinking of?
Well, what I'm thinking of is that the West End was one of the first communities to have a specific plan, and part of that plan was an exchange of height and density for community amenity contributions. So I think we need to be evaluating if we're actually getting true value for that, so whether or not these things that we've been promised to support the density have come along with it, or if we're just getting more and more unaffordable housing and local shops closing down, which is what I see when I walk around my neighborhood.
Okay, thanks so much. Thanks for coming.
Great. Thank you, councillor Swanson, and thank you, Claire. There are no further questions for you, but thank you for taking the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker we have on the line is speaker eight, Sina Mohabrani.
Hi, hello, council. I'm just calling in today to voice my strong support for West Group.
Can I just ask you, before you begin, to state if you are or not a resident of Vancouver?
Oh, sorry, I am a resident of Vancouver.
Great, thanks. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Yeah, I'm just calling in today, as I said, to voice my strong support for West Group's proposed development at 1450 West Georgia Street. As a Vancouverite, I'm living in an urban downtown area, and I'm pretty familiar with this particular site. As we're all aware, the site is currently occupied by a 22-story tower, which was constructed back in the 1950s. I've recently learned that it does not meet current seismic codes, and it is nearing end of its life due to its age. I just was compelled to call in today for the development as West Group has voluntarily applied to replace the existing rental homes on-site while adding additional strata units. I'm pleased to see that they are actually doing the tenant relocation plan, and it's being adhered to. As a young urbanite, I support mixed-use and stratified social occupations of the new development, and I believe that would support our local community. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Great, thank you so much. You do not have any questions from council. Thank you for joining. Okay, speaker number nine, Natasha Lattek.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please advise if you're a resident or not of Vancouver, and then go ahead. You have five minutes.
Oh, yes, I am a resident of Vancouver. So first off, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have become acutely aware of the developments going up and around in Vancouver and the need for further rental spaces, given that I am a millennial who now has a young family with a young daughter. So we do support this project, first off, because it does provide rental spaces for families, which is very difficult to find, especially in an area that is in the downtown core and that is close and accessible to transit, where a family car would not be required. Another point that we really appreciate about this building is the green living space and the fact that it has their green building policies adhered to. That is a very significant point for us, and we're happy to see that the building, or the developers, rather, are working to maintain the heritage character with this redevelopment, because it's nice to see that around the city. So we are most definitely in support of it and would like to see similar such projects become more widely available as we found it difficult to find homes and spaces that allow for a growing family.
Great, thank you so much, Natasha. You do not have any questions from council, but thank you for taking the time today.
Thanks.
Okay, council, at this point, I'd like to ask if there are any speakers for this item, further speakers who wish to speak to council. Please call now toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434 pound before the close of the speakers' list. This phone number will be tweeted and made available via the live stream. And if there are any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium at this time. Okay, not hearing any more speakers. I will now call three times for additional speakers. So this is my first call. If there are any additional speakers to the item, again, call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434 pound before the close of the speakers' list. And again, the phone number's been tweeted out and made available on the live stream, and any speakers at council should come forward. That's call number one. Call number two, again, please call the toll-free number 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434 pound before close of the list. And again, the number can be found on @Vancityclerks Twitter and on the live stream. And any speakers should again come forward.
There are no speakers on the line at this time, nor in the council chamber.
Okay, third and final call. For speakers to call the number at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434 pound before close of the list. And again, the number can be referenced on the channels, on Twitter, and on the live stream, and in-person speakers can come forward.
Okay. There are no speakers on the line or in the chamber.
Okay, not hearing any at this time, council. I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute recess just to provide any final opportunity for speakers on the phone. So we will recess now at 8:19 and reconvene at 8:24 PM. Hearing, we do have speaker number three back on the line, or on the line I should say, Arsalan Shagan. Arsalan? Staff, can we confirm if we have speaker three on the line?
Yes, we're just checking.
Thank you.
The speaker is on the line, it seems there is a technical issue, so we'll just have staff figure that out.
Okay, do you need a moment to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll just take a minute.
Chair Kirby Young, could you ask for the speaker to come online? Thank you.
Yes, speaker three, Arsalan Shagan, do we have you on the line?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you, you have five minutes to speak to council, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, council, I'm calling in today to voice my strong support for West Group's proposed development at 1450 West Georgia Street. I'm just calling in to voice the support because, and I'm in favor of this proposed development for a number of reasons. Firstly, this development will foster a strong community and social fabric by mixing together both strata and rental in a single development. These developments that combine mixed social classes have been shown to have positive effects for the community development. Secondly, this building will replace all existing rental units in the new development. These units are to be family-oriented with a number being two and three bedrooms. As a young renter seeking to expand my family, I appreciate having more of these rentals available on the market, especially because of how low rental is in Vancouver. Thirdly, this development will retain heritage character in an architecturally pleasing building. And fourthly, this building will contribute to the local economy and industry by sourcing local technologies. As noted in the presentation, West Group is sourcing technology and knowledge from local sources. This will contribute to the development of a sustainable Vancouver. And my last point is that I really appreciate that this development will foster 1,400 jobs in Vancouver. As we cover from COVID-19, this development can ensure a resilient economy is achieved. That's about it, thank you for listening to me today and once again, I urge you to vote in favor of this development, thanks.
Great, thank you speaker, you do have questions from councillor Weeb if you'd like to take them, I'm going to advance councillor Weeb, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for coming to speak today. My question is, what was your motivation to come and speak on this issue? What was your intention? Are you someone looking at rent, are you someone in the neighborhood, like what was, what was, is this your first time speaking at council? I just want to know, we have a lot of speakers talk about very similar issues on the projects, I'm just wondering what your intention was?
Well, like I mentioned, I'm a young adult in Vancouver and I just want to support more rental units all around as the prices are just insane right now. I think any stock will contribute to the crisis going on.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Great, thank you councillor Weeb and thank you speaker, there are no further questions for you. Thanks for coming. Okay, so seeing as there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And... As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest that we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and for council to make a decision. So, at this time, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Hi there, sorry, yeah, just want to make one final comment, thank you for your time. Just wanted to note that...
Can I ask you, before you begin, can I just ask you to speak closer to your mic? You still have that cutting out issue a little bit.
Sorry, sorry about that. Yeah, I just, obviously we've heard a lot tonight about, you know, competing policy directions and I just wanted to say, we think this application obviously has a complex and unique zoning and has different directions in the West End Plan, but we believe that it strikes a balance between, you know, protecting existing rental housing, which is not protected under existing zoning, and providing additional public benefits. So, I appreciate that, you know, a lot of councillors have different perspectives on which one is more important and obviously prioritizing those, but we think this application kind of does both and we hope that everybody sees it that way and we just thank everyone for their time.
Great, thank you so much. Do staff have any closing comments at this time?
Nick Danford, rezoning planner, no further comments at this time. I will just say that some of my colleagues did mention to me that the West End Community Plan update was put forward in August and so there's a link on the website that is available, thank you.
Great, thank you staff. And council, do you have any further questions for staff? I do see, this is the opportunity, I do see councillor Carr on the queue, go ahead councillor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Chair Kirby Young. Yeah, my question is around the West End Plan and the intentions of that plan in terms of delivering public benefits, social housing and rental housing primarily in the Georgia-Albertia corridor, sorry, in the Burrard-Thurlo corridor and strata development that would deliver community amenity contributions to fund the public benefit strategy in the Georgia-Albertia corridor. How are we doing in terms of achieving the kind of rental housing units that was intended in the plan on the Burrard-Thurlo corridor, like, sorry, in the Georgia, this is rental in the Burrard-Thurlo corridor, like, how close are we or how far along are we in reaching those targets?
Thanks for the question councillor Carr, Nick Danford, rezoning planner, it's an excellent question. We, I don't have those exact numbers to be frank, you know, we have the, in appendix F, we do have the progress towards the secure market rental and housing, it doesn't get specific though on which corridor these housing tenures are being achieved in.
Yeah, maybe you could state that for the public record, for those listening, what are the targets that we've achieved to date in terms of rental housing?
Sure, so with regards to secured market rental housing, 577 have been completed and there's 950 secured market rentals in progress.
Okay, and the goal?
I believe it's 20,000 secured market rentals within a 10-year timeframe.
Yeah, I remember it was pretty ambitious.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's good for me and in turn, maybe you could also outline what, under our Climate Emergency Action Program, are the stipulations on new builds in terms of using heat and I'm specifically not using fossil fuels for heat and potentially the timeline on that.
So with regards to the heat and gas, so there's provisions within the Vancouver Building Bylaw that seek to have no additional emissions for commercial and multifamily buildings.
Right. But in terms of new build?
Sorry, I'm just having a look at my notes here.
Cynthia Lau, Senior Rezoning Planner, just to capture back on the rental units, 1,900 secured market rental units and further on the, all under our rezoning policy, they are required to be green buildings and this application is looking to be a net zero building.
Okay, okay, that's good enough, it's supposed to be net zero, oh, I'm seeing there's another answer there, thank you.
Councillor Carr, thank you, we've got, the Vancouver Building Bylaw will require zero emission heating and hot water systems for detached homes January 2022 and in multifamily and commercial, it'll be effective in June of 2021. So the new builds will be required for zero emission heating, might still be gas, but it will have to be zero emission gas.
Got it, okay, that's great, thank you, and this building achieves that? From what, I mean, it was verbally stated, but I'm just asking for affirmation?
Yes councillor Carr, that's correct.
Great, okay, thanks so much, appreciate those answers.
Great, thank you councillor Carr, councillor Boyle, questions to staff?
Yes, thanks, I'm just curious to hear from staff if this rezoning didn't go through, what would be allowed under the current zoning and/or what would we anticipate would happen next?
Thanks for the question councillor Boyle, Nick Danford, rezoning planner, so if I understand your question correctly, you're looking to understand what could be built under the current DD zone?
Yes, that's the first part of my question, yes.
Yeah, so it could potentially be a six FSR building, so you'd anticipate a building perhaps of half the size, but could be strata, it would likely be strata?
It would likely be strata and would there be any, I assume, no CACs if it's built under existing zoning?
That's correct.
Okay, and is that what we actually anticipate would happen if this rezoning didn't go through or would we anticipate kind of some changes in a new proposal? I know it's sort of a guess, but if staff have any sense for council based on other applications or conversations?
Yeah, it would be difficult to say, I mean, it would ultimately be up to the applicant to see what meets their needs for future development on the site.
Okay, I will leave it there, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Boyle, councillor Weeb, questions to staff?
Yeah, I've got one question, recognizing that when you look at the community amenities, the one we've hit the most is the 80% mark and that's for rental, I'm wondering, was affordable rental one of the options that was looked at in this and contemplated in talking with development? Even low end of market, was there any conversations about what it would be like to put some low-end market in this project?
That's a great question councillor Weeb, I'll ask Mario Lee from Real Estate to respond.
Hi, this is Mario Lee with Real Estate Services, deepening affordability for some of the rental units was explored during the negotiation, however, we were unable to come to an agreement on the terms of the below-market rentals and therefore the current cash CAC package is presented today.
Okay, really appreciate that, thank you.
Great, thank you councillor Weeb and councillor Carr? Wait, did you have a follow-up question or no?
No, I didn't see anybody else on the list, so I put myself on to move the... Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Carr, seconded by councillor De Genova, is there any debate on this item, if there is, please put yourself on the queue, councillor Carr, would you like to?
Yeah, I would, I would, because I've obviously tracked this plan from its beginnings and I think there was a huge amount of enthusiasm for the idea that, well, actually, there wasn't a huge amount of enthusiasm, it was a controversial plan when it was passed two terms ago and it was one that I think was recognized by the majority of people in the community as a trade-off in terms of the density at the perimeter of the downtown core area with the heights and densities at those perimeter edges to achieve certain things that were public good and so rental and social housing in terms of the Burrard-Thurlo corridor and in terms of the Georgia-Albertia corridor, strata development that would produce CACs that could then fund the West End Plan, public benefit strategy, knowing that part of that public benefit strategy was the rental units and social housing along the Burrard and Thurlo corridors. So, you know, we haven't really got there in terms of what we had hoped would happen within 10 years and I'm really happy that staff were able to report back tonight that we are falling well short of the rental housing units. You know, this is not a hard one for me because I want to see so many of the public benefit elements of the plan implemented and it's going to take cash to do that, but we also have a crisis in housing affordability and rental housing specifically and I would hate to see the loss of 162 units of market rental that are currently in the Georgian towers and therefore even creating a greater gap in terms of our achievement of the need for more rental housing and social housing within the West End. So, from my point of view, it's not great that we're in this position in terms of the implementation of the plan, but I think that there is a wisdom in compromising in order from the original, or deviation from the original plan in order to achieve some more, in this case, retention of rental housing in an upgraded new building. And there still is going to be the delivery of some CACs as well as DCLs that can be contributed towards the implementation of the public benefit strategy for the West End Plan. I also am very taken with the actual building itself and its innovative technologies, I love the idea that Vancouver is at the forefront in some of the buildings that we are building that could be really significant in terms of thermal barriers in the balconies, you know, some unique technology that we, you know, can really pride ourselves in Vancouver for supporting and seeing initiated. And the design too, you know, the whole notion of the trees, I happen to love forests and the protection of them and so the concept around the trees, you know, the rooftop And so the concept around, around the trees, you know, the rooftop gardens, green, green roof. I love the, the amenity space that is midway in the building that is shared between upper and lower floors. And, and really this whole idea of the branches of the tree. So I, I think it's iconic Vancouver and happy to support.
Perfect, thank you, Councilor Carr. I'm not seeing any other, oh, Councilor Swanson just popped on there, go ahead. Closing comments, Councilor Swanson? Councilor Swanson, you may be on mute.
Yeah, it's a hard one. I just made my good column and my bad column. So in the good column, it's pet-friendly, there's 100 tenants who can return, who, who have the right to return to the new building at 20% off market rent, which by my calculations is about what they're paying now. And the 8.9 million in CACs, that's the good. The bad is, we really don't need more strata. It looks to me like they're still thinking about gas cookstoves, depending on what the market desires, when I think that should be based on what the climate needs. And also the bad is that we lose 62 units that are a little bit affordable. There'll be rental, but they will probably be expensive rental. So it's three, four, and three against. And that's where I'm at.
Okay, that's all, Councilor Swanson?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Hardwick, go ahead.
Yeah, again, I, I have difficult, difficulty reconciling a 65-year-old building being at the end of life, especially one that's been constructed like this, pulling down a solid 22-story, 162-solid rental building. Because really what we're saying is we want the CAC cash to pay for amenities, and that justifies the, the ends justifying the means. But we're not taking into consideration on this, and this is across the board with this business model that we've assumed, is that we are inflating land values in excess of pace of change. And this is just exacerbating the affordability problem. So on the one hand, which I believe everybody thinks they're doing the right thing, but in some ways, it's just putting fuel on the fire of affordability through continuing to inflate land values at an exceptional rate. So can't support it, that's me, thanks.
Okay, seeing no other councillors on the queue for closing comments, I will ask the clerk to move us to a vote. Okay, council, that has passed with seven in favor and two in opposition, being, and I wonder, being Councilor Swanson and Councilor Hardwick in opposition. Okay, thank you, council. That concludes item number two. Since we do have the same staff team for item number three, we're not going to take a break to switch over, because we don't need to switch teams. So we're going to commence with item number three. CD1 rezoning for 1157 Burrard Street. Before we begin, does any member of council wish to declare conflict on item three? Hearing none. We'll ask the clerk to now read the application and the summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Merrick Architecture to rezone 1157 Burrard Street from DD Downtown District and C5 West End Commercial Districts to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 47-story mixed-use building containing 289 strata-titled residential units, a childcare facility, an arts and culture hub, and commercial space at grade. A height of 143 meters and a floor-space ratio of 13.37 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list. Fifteen pieces of correspondence in support, 10 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and that is all the correspondence received up until 5:00 PM today.
Great, thank you, clerk. I will let the public know that any speakers, any members of the public who do wish to speak to this item could now call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434 pound before the close of the speakers list. And once again, this number is tweeted out and made available on the live stream. And there will be an opportunity for any individuals on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. Also, I'm going to suggest that we hear the presentation, because we do have speakers registered for this item. And so we'll ask Nicholas Danford, planner for the rezoning center, to present the application. You're up again.
Great, thanks, thanks, Deputy Mayor. Again, it's me, Nick Danford. As mentioned by the clerk, the application for us to consider now is a 47-story strata residential building that contains commercial units at grade, as well as the in-kind delivery of a community space and childcare facility at 1157 Burrard. So many of you may be familiar with the site. It's at the prominent intersection of Burrard and Davie Streets, where the West End meets Downtown. So the site's located on the northwest corner of the intersection in a split zone, C5 and DD Downtown District. The C5 zone is generally the zone, the commercial zone that you see within the West End. So the land to the east within the downtown is generally Zone DD, or sites have their own unique CD1s that generally allow for higher-density residential uses or office uses. And buildings in this area range between nine stories, and I believe the Burrard one is about 50 stories, that's just nearing completion. While the land to the west is generally a Zone C5, which is a lower-scale commercial zone, and buildings along the Davie Village range between a single story to four or five stories. So some of you may remember when this site was a Shell gas station. Since the time the gas station was removed about a decade ago, the site has hosted a community garden that is still present there today. So the site is prominently located at the entrance of the Davie Village. And if you're familiar with the area, just across Davie Street is an ASO station. Kitty corner to the site is a 12-story medical office building. And just across Burrard is a site of a recently-approved social housing building, 17 stories, that was approved by council earlier this year. So this site is, is very centrally located within the downtown peninsula. It's just across the lane from the current St. Paul's Hospital site, as well as, the site's really well-serviced by amenities within a short walk of Nelson Park, Sunset Beach, as well as Stanley Park. It's within a 15-minute walk to both Yaeltown and Burrard Street Skytrain stations, and is surrounded by numerous childcare facilities indicated in the blue dot. The site is located within the VSB catchment area of Lord Roberts Elementary School, which is a 10-minute walk away, and King George Secondary, which is about a 20-minute walk. So similar to the last item, the west, this, this site is included within the West End Community Plan, and the rezoning is being considered under the enabling rezoning policy for the West End. So there's no explicit FSR or density limit within this, within the West End Plan. Instead, density is controlled by a number of form of development policies and guidelines that are embedded within the plan, as well as associated guidelines. So in this area of the Burrard corridor, projects can have a floor plate size of 7,500 square feet and reach a height of 375 feet. So this site has been identified in the higher buildings policy as a site to potentially have higher buildings. And so just reminding council that the higher buildings policy does permit for certain sites within the downtown to penetrate the Queen Elizabeth View corridor, providing it achieves a higher, high level of architectural excellence, green building standards, and enhancements to the public realm. So the eastern portion of the site is enabled for greater, greater height. So this application was received in December of 2018 with a resubmission in September of 2020. The main difference between the two iterations was a change in use, and there were some minor form of development changes, but didn't change the overall form of development. So proposed is a 47-story strata building that includes ground-floor commercial space that would front Davie Street. The proposal includes the delivery of two in-kind amenities in the form of a single aerospace parcel that includes a 37-space childcare facility, as well as nearly 16,000 square feet of floor area that's expected to be the future location of a arts and culture hub, as well as a multipurpose room. So the overall FSR is proposed to be 13.37 and a height of 469 feet. This is all above seven levels of underground parking that would be accessed from Semeyla Lane at the rear of the property. And as part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, it's expected that a project of this scale and type would yield approximately 1,400 new jobs. So this rezoning did have an in-person open house that was held in April of 2019. Forty-eight folks from the public attended the event, and 53 forms of correspondence were received through the, through the application process. Again, mixed feedback was heard from the public. Some did support the attractive and appropriate building height of the proposal, as well as the inclusion of a childcare facility and the design of the public realm at grade. While others did have concern about the proposal's fit within the neighborhood, as well as the public benefits that are on offer. So this building takes the form of a 40-story flat iron-shaped tower atop of a seven-story podium. So the podium has been designed to accommodate commercial uses at grade fronting Davie Street, as well as the, the two in-kind facilities being delivered in the form of a childcare and arts and culture hub on Level 3. The remainder of the podium would be of residential use, and of course, in the tower would be residential use as well. So in responding to the higher buildings policy, the building has been designed with a distinct shape that varies depending on where in the city you, you view it. The, the proposal includes a covered plaza that's located right at the corner of Davie and Burrard, as well, the project has been designed to reduce carbon emissions as per the green buildings policy. The building is consistent with the heights and densities that are expected within the West End Plan for this area, and is UConn and largely Shadow compliant. Now, this project was subject to a negotiated CAC process. In the West End Plan, it identifies this particular site as an opportunity to secure in-kind delivery of amenities or, or space for the city. So the, the delivery is in the form of a single aerospace parcel with a 37-space childcare facility and nearly 16,000 square feet of office space, which is expected to be an arts and culture hub, turnkey-ready to the city. Now, the arts and culture hub is generally office space that could be leased out to arts and cultural organizations, such as literary or visual arts organizations, offices for festival, dance, or theater organizations. As well, the, the space includes a multi, medium-sized multipurpose room that could be accessed for programming for these organizations. So on top of the in-kind delivery of these amenities, the applicant has offered a $10.6 million cash contribution to be attributed as per the West End Public Benefit Strategy. So taking into account the in-kind delivery, the cash CAC, as well as DCLs and public art fees, the public benefits on offer are just, just over $41 million. So council, with that, staff do support, recommend support of the 47-story mixed-use building at 1157 Burrard, as subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B in the report in front of you. The proposal does meet the intent of the West End Community Plan, along with the corresponding rezoning policies of the higher buildings policy. So if approved, the project would deliver these two in-kind amenities, turnkey to the city, as well as $10.6 million in cash. I'm just noticing my slide is wrong. I want to be sure to say that it is $10.6, not $10.2 million in cash. That would be allocated as per the West End Community Benefit Strategy. And so with that, as always, staff and the applicant are available if there's any questions. Appreciate your time.
Great, thank you, staff. And do we have the applicant team here to speak to the application? If so, would you like to go ahead and do that now?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me clearly?
You can.
Wonderful. So my name is David Butler, and I'm the General Manager of Prima Properties in Vancouver. And I'm here today with our project architect, Gregory Borowski from Merrick Architecture, as well as our sustainability consultant, Kevin Walsh from Integral. To start, I would first like to thank city staff for all of their work on this project. Prima is a local, family-owned development company, proud to work in the Lower Mainland with a focus on the city of Vancouver. We have also, over the last decade, invested a lot of time in the West End. One of our first large-scale development projects was Laguna Parkside on Alberney and Guilford Street, adjacent to Stanley Park. Also, I've been on the board of the West End BIA for more than 10 years, and had been able to gain a real appreciation for the diversity of this neighborhood, its residents, and its businesses. So we want to stress that this neighborhood is important to us, and that is how we've approached the development of this property. The West End Plan was approved by council, as you know, in 2013, and Prima has been working on a rezoning application since that time. The project that is before you for your consideration tonight is the culmination of eight years of work. The West End Plan outlined public benefit priorities for the neighborhood and most development projects in the neighborhood that made financial contributions to those priorities. Our proposal is one of the few in the neighborhood that includes onsite public amenities that will be delivered to the city. That means we will build them as part of the project's construction. These public amenities include a not-for-profit daycare that will be able to accommodate 37 children, approximately 16,000 square feet of arts and cultural office space to be offered, operated by a not-for-profit, and a public plaza at the corner of Burrard and Davie. Prima is also contributing a cash CAC of $10.6 million towards the funding of other West End public benefits. Through this project, we are pleased to be able to contribute to the vibrancy of this neighborhood in such a meaningful way. We're also very proud of the building that Gregory Borowski and his team at Merrick Architecture have designed for this important location in the West End. I will let Greg walk you through the design approach and how this building responds to its context, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Hi, I'd just like to confirm that everybody can hear me. Could someone say if they're able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Great, okay. I'd like to go through some of the design and sustainability components of this project and share them with you. So I'm just going to share the screen, I hope you'll be able to see that. Let's, let's try this again. So are you able to see on the screen the, the watercolor of the corner of Davie and Burrard?
Yes, we have an image of a visual of it rendering now.
Oh, great, okay. So, yes, as David mentioned, my name's Gregory Borowski. I'm a principal with Merrick Architecture. I'm, I'm a long-term resident of the West End. I live probably five blocks from this corner, and certainly very engaged and impassioned in this neighborhood. I love this neighborhood, it's very important to me. We've done a number of projects, important projects in this neighborhood, including the O2 project in the corner, or close to the corner of Davie and Denman. Of course, done the Laguna Parkside project with Prima Properties, who's presenting today near the entrance to Stanley Park, and the Eventide project at the corner of Buton Beach. So we're very engaged in this neighborhood and very interested in it. And the opportunity that came about in this project, of course, is very significant, being at the corner of Davie and Denman. We wanted to realize a, a real kind of gathering point for the community. There's really been, I think, an absence of a sense of arrival when you come to the neighborhood. So the opportunity to establish a corner plaza at the corner of Davie and Burrard, a place where you could call people up. place where you could call people up, meet them, and actually move across the site. So it's a really neat opportunity for people to now have a kind of destination to welcome you into the neighborhood. And of course, along the frontage, running up Davie Street to have a whole animated series of shop fronts and new cafes, restaurants, all that kind of thing to kind of build on what's already established further along Davie Street. Similarly, for the corner plaza to be a destination for people coming to the arts and culture hub. And so it'll not only be people who are casually meeting coming into Davie Village, but also for those people who have, you know, business and activities in the building who will be coming through here. Similarly, for the childcare, of course, as well. So the childcare will have an opportunity to look out over Davie Street and the kids' outdoor area does face south over Davie, which is going to be, we think, pretty fun for the kids. And of course, for the tower to have a major presence along Burrard Street being, I guess, probably the most ceremonial street in the city of Vancouver. We went through a whole series of ideas for this site, building in particular on the flat iron kind of idea. Probably people have heard that term in New York. It's this kind of triangular-shaped site. So we went through probably at least a dozen different kind of notions for this site, if not more, in discussion with planning, in parts aiming to reconcile the view cones and other things that come across the site and also kind of capitalizing on the opportunity to have a very thin end towards the viewer or the person coming through the city as you come off the Burrard Bridge and then angle into the downtown to have this very thin leading edge to the building. Thought that would be a really interesting thing to capitalize on and to shape one's experience coming into the city. This shape in turn is qualified further by the balconies on the leading-edge corner that gesture and a kind of welcome into the West End. So they gesture towards Davie Street as you come up Burrard. The building concept, building on actually a similar idea we just heard in the previous application, was the significance of the nature in Vancouver. We also worked on the Electra Building, the former BC Hydro Building, and its connection through Ron Tom and BC Binning, the connection to the landscape was very important. They introduced blue and green, which should not be seen at the time. At the time, the international style was calling for primaries and they did it very differently. So we were inspired by that idea of BC Binning and Ron Tom's. He was, of course, the mentor of Paul Merrick, my mentor. So as we look across Vancouver, of course, towards the North Shore, we see this language of mountain, sea, snow, and sky. We imagine kind of taking a fragment of that view, looking out towards the North Shore, and kind of translating it into the language of the building, conceptually looking through the downtown at the North Shore, then translating that into a series of pixels that would take you kind of from ground and sea, up mountain and forest to sky in this series of pixels. The opportunity to do that is really enhanced by our sustainability strategy. Because of the shaping of the building, the principal facade faces to the west, and as we know, that's the area that gains the most solar heat gain. It's also the side which you view from the Davie Village looking back towards Burrard Street. So we wanted to use this as an opportunity to animate this facade using a series of solar control blinds. So this is a facade that would be dynamic and change throughout the day as the sun moves around building. So as the sun moves from the south round to the west, increasingly the blinds come out, increasingly cover the facade. Eventually, it's in kind of full cover of these kind of pixel elements. And of course, as the sun continues around further to the west and to the north in the summer, gradually the pixels diminish and go back to zero. So this is an opportunity to have a building that's kind of constantly in change and dynamic on the skyline as well as doing a job of solar protection. So we're interested in that opportunity of the poetics of the expression of the building and also this kind of ever-changing mosaic, looking back from the village and considering the significance of the makeup of the village and the attachment to diversity. Thought was an interesting opportunity. We've already talked a little bit about that corner plaza opportunity and, of course, the different uses. Earlier, we see then an overview of the model looking down to the canopies and that overview of the corner plaza, and you see some of the color from the solar shades in this image. And lastly, a view up from Davie Village back in the direction towards Burrard Street. The scaling of this was rather important because as you go from Davie back towards Burrard, we wanted to see a transition from the village scale, you know, one, two, three, four stories, back up to the scale of the tower that addresses Burrard Street in the broader context of the towers of the downtown. So we felt it was quite important to have that transition of scale between the podium elements, the Arts and Culture Centre and the daycare. And those are some kids looking back down Davie Street because of the positioning of the building is an opportunity to have this kind of aperture, looking down Davie Street and get to see the kids in the building when you're walking by. And you can see the bus stop that's there and the little Davie monuments along the edge on that side as well. So yeah, those are some of the ideas. I think importantly, we won't be using fossil fuels for fueling the project or for the stove tops, et cetera. That was a subject that came up earlier. And with respect to the balconies, we're actually wrapping them as an insulated wrap to the balcony in addition to the kind of dynamic solar control devices that really showcase the sustainability. There are other kind of hidden elements such as the wrapping of the balconies with the insulation to create a good passive design along with triple glazing of the podium. So that captures, I guess, you know, basic essence of the project. And of course, welcome any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much. You do have questions from Counselor Boyle. Counselor Boyle, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. I actually have a couple of questions for staff. And the first is I'm interested to know more about the arts hub that's planned. I think you said it would largely be office space and not performance or community space, but I'm interested in how we figure out who goes there, which organizations get office space there? Is it actually at market rent? What's the, what can you tell us and the community or folks listening about what that space would look like and who would get access to it?
For sure, I can speak to that. My name is Kristin Lambertson. I'm from Cultural Services. So the intention of this space is arts and culture hub. So it could be made up of several organizations and originally intended for literary arts focus, but there could be a range from performance artists, performance arts, visual arts, festivals, et cetera, organizations who might need to have some office space to host their administrative intentions as well as to do some potential programming in that multi-use hub. In terms of how we would tenant that space, so should this project be approved? We would undergo a process to select a nonprofit arts and culture organization or potentially several that would be responsible for tenenting and operating this space. And criteria for this selection includes demonstrating mandates and programs that support local and citywide cultural community needs as articulated in our council-approved Making Space for Arts and Culture Report. And then there could be opportunities for also for that organization or organization to do sub-tenanting. And that would also include priorities to select from Vancouver-based and/or Musqueam, Squamish, and Slavettus professional artists and cultural practitioners, arts and culture organizations from historically excluded and equity-denied communities, and arts and culture organizations located in Vancouver or from Musqueam, Squamish, or Slavettus band councils. Staff would return to council for approval of the selected nonprofit operator as well as lease terms. Did that answer your question?
Yes, I mean, I'm sure I could have a whole hour-long conversation about that. I'm interested in more, but that is helpful for now and I appreciate it. My other question is around the community garden, which has clearly become quite a well-loved and appreciated spot in the neighborhood. Can you give us a better sense, I assume, community garden members utilizing those spaces have had a sense that this was coming? Is there other space nearby for them to use? Or what sort of, what happens, what becomes of that community garden space and the folks that have been gardening in it?
Great, thanks for the question, Counselor Boyle, Nick Danford, rezoning planner. There's no requirement for the applicant or the landowner to replace it, unfortunately. And so it would be at the discretion of neighboring landowners to fill that gap or that void. And I maybe would hand it to David, the applicant, to talk about the work that he's done with the group.
Sure, thank you for the question. It's a good one and something that we've given a lot of thought to. So the garden plots are given out once a year strictly to West End residents. We give them out as a license, so we typically have a waiting list each year. And it's a license that terminates after about nine months. So then in the winter term, we turn over the soil and then put it back out to the neighborhood. We get some repeat gardeners. So we've always given them the knowledge that as our proposal goes forward, that at any given year, the garden could end. And so their license is just for nine months for that basis. We've also reached out to, there's a pretty good community garden community in the West End and some other locations. So we'll give them a lot of advance notice. It'll terminate at the end of the growing season and then we can assist them in relocating some of their plants if they wanted to, to other community gardens that may be available on the West End.
Okay, really appreciate the thought and care on that front. Thanks, that's all for me.
Thanks, Counselor Boyle. And I'm sorry, I did go over a little bit there. And Counselor Carr, I just dropped off my cue. Can you put yourself back on? Great, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much. I was also interested in the community garden, which has been a, you know, real focus of activity for many years. How many years has it been in place? It seems forever. I'm asking the applicant.
So when the gas station lease ended, we had to remediate the property. We expected that we'd have about a two- to three-year time for the soil to clean up and it actually remediated very quickly, so it was under a year or so. That would have been in approximately 2008 or '09, that, once we constructed the garden.
And have you had a lot of people renew every year? It seems to me like a lot of the plots are pretty similar and there were some fairly long-term plantings, some of which have been ripped out, berry bushes and that kind of thing.
There's been a strong core group. There's sort of a garden executive that helps manage the garden. So we do have a lot of repeats, but as people move on or secure their home with a yard or move to another location in the city, they've moved on. But yeah, there's approximately 165 plots and I would say at least 50% of them turn over each year.
Oh, right, okay. Good. And in terms of the culture, arts and culture hub and space, who within the community of the West End are you working with in terms of the plaza or are you working with any groups in terms of the interest in renting from that facility?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we would be engaging with the community in terms of determining who is interested in that space and who has the capacity to take on that space. And so there would be a range of organizations dependent upon their needs and how that would fit. We did, we do know that in the West End Community Plan that co-located spaces were identified as a priority. And so this really is great in terms of satisfying that need. And so definitely, we would engage with West End as well as potentially other organizations but wanting to serve that population as well as the citywide population.
Okay, okay, thanks. I think there's a lot of arts and culture organizations in the West End. Thanks very much, those are my questions.
Great, thanks, Counselor Carr. I do want to remind counsel, this is the one opportunity here, ask questions of the applicant team in case any counselors do have questions. I'm going to, seeing none, I'm going to take the opportunity to just ask a question myself. And it's really with respect to the insulated wraps on the balconies. And I wonder if you could just speak to that with a bit more detail and around the benefits of that specifically and what results from that.
Yes, Greg Borowski, again from Merrick Architecture. The main benefit, of course, of wrapping the balconies is reducing that heat transfer. So there's either heat gain or loss, depending on the time of year, of course. So the opportunity from wrapping the balconies is to differentiate really from the current practice. Balconies typically in Vancouver, you heard on the earlier application, they have still another approach, which is actually separating entirely. Because of the way these need to be constructed via cantilever, they are attached back to the main slab, but they are wrapped in insulation on the top sides and bottom. So this basically keeps them warmer and diminishes the heat transfer from inside to outside or outside to inside. So it is innovative to the extent that normally, because Vancouver is a mild climate, the habit has been to simply extend the concrete slab outside. Of course, this is a little bit like a radiator. The more fins you have, the more energy going in and going out. So the intent of wrapping them is to kind of isolate the balcony plane from the exterior and tighten back to the interior. So it's corresponding savings in energy.
Okay, and related to that, I'm wondering, in contemplation of a project like this and a design, because we do have, you know, we do get a lot of liquid sunshine. We have some today in Vancouver. And counsel has previously given direction around asking staff to look from a policy perspective, the ability for retractable glass or otherwise on balconies for utility. Is that something that came up in discussion on this particular project when you were looking at solutions in terms of environmental footprint or the use of the balconies for livability?
Sorry, could you mention the retractable? I missed the word that you said for retractable.
The direction previously given to staff by counsel was to look at any potentially enabling policy to enable retractable balconies so that the spaces could potentially be enclosed or opened up?
Oh, I see, retractable balconies. Yes, in this particular case, we have prioritized outdoor space. So among the, you know, the various policy items we're addressing, of course, are also the family policy and the policy of providing outdoor space. We're providing more than the, you know, basic percentage of balconies by providing all as outdoor space rather than enclosed and outdoor space. So it also gives a bit of a lighter look to the building. A lot of buildings in the downtown south area where, you know, in the '90s or so, they used 50% enclosed balconies, are very kind of bloated-looking in my humble opinion. So we've prioritized outdoor space in this particular instance.
Okay, thank you. And there are questions from Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Hardwick, questions to the applicant or staff?
Want to be?
Go for it.
Yes, to the applicant, who is the market for the housing that you're building here?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We've done market research in the West End and there's a lot of interest in it. So it's going to be a variety. Family housing, we think, is going to be quite popular. I think that the benefit of having a daycare within the building that could be available to some residents is a big plus. In the podium, we're going to focus on providing smaller units, as small as possible. So those will be a lot of studios and junior one-bedrooms. I see that those, you know, potentially could attract people that are in the service industry in the West End, that may be part of, maybe working in the village right now. So it'll be, you know, a local focus for sure.
Okay, so it's not setting up offshore sales or anything? Okay, so it's not setting up offshore sales or anything like that?
No, it's not.
Okay, and my question then to staff, thank you for that, is with respect to the West End Community Plan, I'm talking about the implementation report here. I heard one of staff say that this was posted on the website in August. I don't think we're talking about the implementation report, and I'd appreciate clarification since that is one of the underlying assumptions on which this application is based.
For the question, Councillor Hardwick, I'm just trying to find link here. So there was a West End Public Benefit Strategy Progress Report that was posted on the City of Vancouver's website. And my understanding from my colleagues was that that was presented in August of this year to Councillor, August 19th.
I think it might be in apples and oranges here, but I'm looking for the implementation report, and if, I don't want to hold up the hearing here. So if you could please send a link to the implementation report, if that has in fact been provided, it's not something that I've been able to find while I've been sitting here, and I'd appreciate it.
Of course, of course.
Thank you, that's it, Councillor Hardwick?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Frye, go ahead, questions to staff or the applicant?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And this question for the applicant, actually, it's for Gregory Borowski. Hi, Gregory, I'm curious, reading through some of the UDP comments, I mean, it's a very attractive building, but one of the things that jumped out at me, and especially given the significance of this intersection as gateway to the Davie Village, and how that treatment and how it engages sort of as a gateway. And I, when I think one of the comments reflected that there was a lot of attention paid on the tower, but not much on the podium and the Davie Street interface. How are we contemplating kind of correcting those comments from the UDP?
So, sorry, can you hear me, Councillor Frye?
I sure can, yeah.
Oh, great, okay, yeah. So among the things discussed with planning in response to those comments are somewhat enlarging the plaza. So we've discussed with planning approximately 10% footprint of the site firstly, so the plaza's more generous. Also increasing the sort of sense of scale of the space overhead. So we had previously had kind of a canopy coming across midway across the plaza at a lower level, but maybe allowing the plaza sort of the sense of full height. And also kind of improving the flow between the corner and the village, so the kind of openness of those retail spaces. We're imagining that they can kind of open full frontage, a little bit like, you know, some of the other retail spaces along Davie Street. They have a very engaging quality, because, you know, some of them have garage doors or whatever that open, so that you can really feel when you're walking by the cafe tables and so on, you're kind of right in there. So we do see a kind of very animated level of activity at grade. Of course, we'll have the Arts and Culture Hub immediately above, which is also accessed from the entry of the Corner Plaza, so we do see that as a big, big kind of destination. And of course, the daycare garden actually at the top of it. So the scaling down is really important, I think, along Davie compared to the, there's the tower on the corner, but importantly, that kind of three-story scale as you come along Davie towards the Fountainhead Pub and the setting back of the other six stories of the podium to align with the office building that's above the Fountainhead Pub. So there's kind of a scaling going on along the Davie Street frontage. And of course, the public realm, the ground surface as well, we're imagining a kind of encouragement of pathways that lead you kind of visually eyeball as you flow from the corner of Burrard and up Davie Street. So those are some of the strategies we're looking at as we go to the next phase of the design.
That's nice. Now, has there been any kind of contemplation around what kind of CRU they're gonna be tailoring this towards?
Well, we're imagining certainly restaurant and cafe space, we're presuming a priority. You know, the Corner Plaza lends itself well to that, because of course, you can have tables and so forth that can spell out. And we've seen over the COVID phase, the very great importance of having the kind of animation of the street and, you know, the implementation even of all of those parklets, which has been amazing along Davie. It's actually transformed Davie as a resident of the West End. I really feel that the animation of the street is so fundamental to the excitement, and it's just got better.
And I appreciate that you gave it that context, that you live nearby, so you do understand that. Okay, great, thanks, Gregory.
Thanks very much.
Perfect, thanks, Councillor Frye. Councillor Carr, you have the floor, go ahead. You may be muted, Councillor.
Thank you so much. Yes, I do have a question for staff, and that is regarding the fact that this site is also in the Burrard corridor in the West End plan. And although the report talks about the fact that this corridor is sort of split zone between the downtown development plan and the West End plan, in the West End plan, it calls for rental development with inclusionary social housing. So this is not that strategy. So how are we rationalizing that?
Councillor Carr, that's an excellent question. So this site in particular, so the actual underlying zoning is C5, which is the commercial district within the West End, and then DD, the downtown district zone. So this is distinction there. And so this site in particular is earmarked within the West End Community Plan as a site to achieve the, an in-kind delivery of an amenity. And so that's what is being sought here with this application.
That's helpful information, appreciate that, thank you.
No problem.
That's it, Councillor Carr, short and sweet.
Yep.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, so no further questions from Councillor. This time, we will now hear from the public, from our registered speakers. And our first registered speaker, number one, is Rick Hurlbut. Rick, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Great, go ahead. And I know you've indicated you're a resident of Vancouver, you have five minutes to speak to Councillor.
Good evening, Councillor. I'm speaking tonight with concerns about the composition of the proposed high-rise at 1157 Burrard Street. First, some context. In five years from now, more or less, St. Paul's Hospital will relocate to its new campus on the Falklands Creek Flats. When it goes, it will leave a huge hole in the Davie Village ecosystem. St. Paul's is a 24/7/365 operation. With staff coming and going around the clock, they help to support unique 24/7 businesses on Davie Street. There's a 24-hour shoppers' drug mart, a 24-hour denny's restaurant, 24-hour convenience stores, a nearly 24-hour independent brochure, and a 24-hour SO service station, complete with a Tim Hortons kiosk. When St. Paul's moves, all these businesses will be impacted. So when the new development under discussion this evening was originally to include a 50-room boutique hotel, I was hopeful that the tourism this would bring to the neighborhood would help to offset some of the expected losses. But now I see that that idea is off the table for this project. There have been a number of hotel closures of late. The Empire Landmark was demolished for new condos. The Four Seasons and Trump Hotels are currently shuttered. A number of budget hotels have been purchased by the government and converted to housing. We may not be feeling it now in the midst of the pandemic, but in a few short years, Vancouver may find itself with a hotel shortage. The need is real. A hotel would help also to add revenue for the West End BIA, something condos will not do. I encourage one of you to introduce an amendment making the hotel component contingent on the project being approved. Finally, a few comments on the 2S LGBTQ+ community. There is language in Appendix A that intends to have both the Arts and Culture Hub and the streetscaping and lower facade of the building be sensitive to the 2S LGBTQ+ community. Who will make this happen? Who will be consulted? Will the Arts and Culture Hub, in fact, be prioritized for the 2S LGBTQ+ institutions, like the Vancouver Pride Society, Vancouver Queer Film Festival, or Queer Arts Festival? Unless there is clear language in the motion itself, these are just nice words, aspirational rather than instructional. Intent is not a clear directive. A further amendment is needed to add specific language which require these elements to be incorporated into the new development. In review, number one, an amendment is needed to require the boutique hotel. And number two, an amendment is needed to require real and substantial inclusion of Vancouver's 2S LGBTQ+ community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I think you were very clear in your comments. I don't see any questions from councillors, but thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number two, Jocelyn Tracy?
Hi there, good evening, one and all. It's getting late.
It is. Can I ask you just to identify if you are or not a resident of Vancouver?
Oh, I was just going to.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yes, yes, I've been a resident of the West End for 68 years. And I oppose the building, the proposal as it is right now. After four hours of listening to today's public hearing applications, I have rewritten my notes three times. It's getting shorter and tighter with every rewrite, as many of my concerns have been covered. But here's what it comes down to. The biggest problem in the West End is lack of rental housing. So why are we allowing yet another gray slab condo to be built in our area? This proposed building has zero rental units. And God knows what these condos will cost. I don't know if the applicants know that 48% of the West End residents are between 20 and 49 years of age. And I'm wondering if any of those will be able to purchase one of these units? Probably not. It's become clear to me that West Enders are being driven out by rich developers whose only interest is financial. Let's make this. I feel like I'm flogging a dead horse, but please reconsider this proposal and demand rental units, if not social housing. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. You don't have any questions from Councillor, but thank you for taking the time.
Bye now.
Okay, speaker number three, Alan Featherston Howe? Alan, are you on the line? Alan Featherston Howe? Okay, we'll move on to speaker number four, Stephen Regan. Speaker four, Stephen Regan?
Chair, Kirby Young, we're just checking with staff to see if there's a technical issue.
Okay, we'll stand by for a minute.
Hi, I'm here. City staff, I'm on the phone, standing by.
Sorry, is that Alan, is that speaker three, Alan Featherston Howe?
No, this is Stephen Regan. I'm, am I on now, am I live?
You are on now, we can hear you loud and clear. And I assume you're speaking on behalf of the West End BIA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, you have five minutes to speak to Councillor.
Thank you very much, Councillor. And I've been looking forward to speaking on to, in favor of this project for probably seven years now, so I'm really pleased that it's moving forward. As some of you know, I have recently moved on as acting or executive director of the West End BIA, but I'm in transition for the board until the new executive director starts November 1st. So I'm speaking in that capacity. I'm very pleased to be speaking in favor of this and to kind of tie up that loose end from the early days of the West End Community Plan. We were supportive of development done well. When the West End Community Plan was moving through, we feel this corner development and gateway into the Davie Village area was very important. We're pleased that the diversity of housing, it's gonna add to the spaces required for families of two and hopefully three. And we feel equally satisfied that the daycare facilities and the community amenity contributions are gonna contribute to the neighborhood, not just Davie Village, but well beyond into the rest of the West End. We have, final thought, we think that the plaza space that's being developed there and contemplated there, very much, we're hopeful that the city's patio initiatives and other outdoor, you know, street vibrancy plans that were contemplated in the West End Community Plan will be implemented on that site. It's very important that businesses are able to spill into that, into that streetscape. And I agree with the comments that we think the patio program implemented across the city and particularly in the Davie Village and in the West End has made for a more interesting and vibrant streetscape. So we hope that will continue and be encouraged, and we think this development's gonna add a lot to the corner and spill into the Davie Village neighborhood. So we're in support, thank you very much.
Terrific, thank you, Stephen. You do not have any questions from Councillor, but thank you for taking time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker five, or sorry, I'm gonna go back to speaker number three, just because I think we had a small technical glitch there. Alan Featherston Howe? Alan?
We'll have staff check with Alan, just one moment.
This is city moderator. Alan, can you try speaking to Councillor right now? Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, we will do a call back through the list, I'm just gonna keep us moving, given the hour. So speaker five, Claire Lomas?
Hi.
Thank you, go ahead, you have five minutes. We can, go ahead.
Excellent. Well, since I just spoke about another development in my neighborhood, I'll just keep this brief. So I am a Vancouver resident, I live in the West End, and I have done so for the last 13 years or so now. So I've been listening in on the call, and I would like to echo the call that I can't seem to find this implementation report that was referred to by city staff earlier. There was an infographic about the general benefits of what's gonna happen to the West End, but no detailed analysis in terms of how many projects have been approved so far, and more importantly, what that has done to the value of the land in our neighborhood. This particular property has, as was stated, has been quote-unquote "some of vacant" for the last few years. It's been home to a community garden. From what I understand, developers get a fair tax break from having these community gardens. And as, I believe this property has undergone a number of rezonings over the years, starting out with the gas station where it was at 60 feet, then the West End Community Plan, and now this is actually exceeding the West End Community Plan with the higher limits. So once again, as a resident, I'm just wondering what all the trade-offs are as rent keeps going up in the neighborhood? These are condos, which are generally geared at higher income levels. So yeah, just repeating what I've said before, it'd be really great to be able to see some sort of report as to how many homes have been approved in the West End, how that compares to the estimated 7,000 to 10,000 residents over the next 30 years. And yeah, how we're actually going to address. actually going to address affordable housing in the West End. So that's it. I oppose this development.
Great. Thank you, Claire. No questions for you, but thank you again for taking time out of your day.
Yeah, thanks. Bye.
Okay. Speaker number six, Deepak Sharma.
Hi there. Hello.
Hi. We can hear you loud and clear. You have five minutes to go ahead and speak to council when you're ready, and if you could just advise if you're a resident or not of Vancouver.
I'm currently a proud and longtime resident of Surrey, British Columbia. Good evening, council, and thank you for considering my comments tonight. Before I make any comments, though, I apologize for any potential background as in advance, but I do currently reside in a multi-generational home, which is a privilege of its own, of course. Once again, my name is Deepak Sharma, and I'd like to share the motive behind why I'm speaking in support of this proposal in 1157 Barrard Street, which we also know as the corner of Davie and Barrard. I don't have to tell you how challenging it is to buy your own home in Lower Bayne Ave, let alone Vancouver. I finally feel that I'm in a position to do that in the next year without the support of my parents, and I'm evaluating where I'd like to live. This is an amazing location, and I can't actually believe that the neighborhood doesn't already have a tall building that seamlessly fits into the community similar to this one. It's exactly the kind of location that I think I'd live in. It's close to shops, restaurants, English Bay, safe accessible bike lanes, and rapid transit. I also like the fact that there will be shops directly in the building along Davie Street and a nonprofit daycare, which, as we've all seen, is essential for future young families. Speaker number two's comments on how 40% of residents on the West End are under the age 50 makes me even more excited about speaking in favor of this project, which also leads me to my next point, that most importantly, I appreciate the applicant making the inclusive effort to create mixed residential housing by including more affordable units such as studio suites. Housing such as this allows me to get my foot in the door while allowing me substantially eliminate my corporate footprint, as I no longer have to make, need to make the long commute into our downtown core. I hope you approve this proposal, and I look forward to potentially living here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. I don't see any questions, council, but we appreciate you making time to speak. Okay, speaker seven, Taylor Varell. Varell, perhaps?
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi.
If you can just identify if you're a resident or not of Vancouver, and then you have five minutes.
Hi, I, so I'm not a resident of the city of Vancouver. I am, but I'm a daily commuter into downtown Vancouver. I'm a lifelong resident of Greater Vancouver, and I think I would describe myself as an aspiring resident of the city of Vancouver, and I'll get to why that is in a moment. So as has sort of been mentioned earlier on by some of the speakers, it's not exactly a secret Vancouver is in the midst of a housing crisis. Here's the harsh reality, younger generations have been priced out of Vancouver's housing market, particularly the city, and even more specifically, the neighborhoods in downtown Vancouver. I'm a professional. I work full-time downtown, and yet I can't afford to buy a home in the city, and I could barely afford to rent a property anywhere in the city if that was, if that was what I was trying to do. Look, it's tough. And a previous speaker suggested that some folks are being pushed out by developers, some community members are being pushed out by developers, but I hate to say it, people like me have already been pushed out, and it's not because too much housing was being built. I'm not a unique case. Increasingly, people like me, millennials, younger people, are being forced to go further and further away to downtown to find housing. That's pretty well-known, as the speaker before me just mentioned. Longer commute, it's greater reliance on motor vehicles, it leads to a lower quality of life. People who contribute and spend the majority of their time in the city of Vancouver, the majority of their waking hours in the city of Vancouver, who aren't able to live there. They have to, it has significant impact on the environment through how people get to work, has significant impacts on the economy, because you're, you have folks who maybe have lower skilled labor or priced out of the market, hurts businesses, I don't know, the reasons go on and on. So we're in this housing crisis, but we do have an answer, and it's pretty straightforward. We need to build more housing, just in general. Some folks might not want to acknowledge that there is a lack of housing supply, but there absolutely is. There aren't enough townhomes, aren't enough apartments, aren't enough condos, aren't enough, sometimes you get called the missing middle. We don't have enough units, enough spaces to meet the demand. If we did, we wouldn't have such low vacancy rates. If we did, we wouldn't have skyrocketing housing prices, and I hate to say it, the only way we meet that demand is by building more homes. This project obviously doesn't solve all the challenges, it doesn't magically make the housing crisis go away, but it's a step in the right direction. And I'm sorry, I'll strongly disagree with what one of the previous speakers had said. This isn't some faceless gray box skyscraper. It's a beautiful project aesthetically, and it's a, it looks to be a good quality mixed-use development. It's not commercial and retail and daycare spaces. It's, it seems like, you know, I've spent a lot of time in Davie and on Barrard, and it looks like it would be a big benefit to the community at large, one that would be so for decades to come. And to build off of what the previous speaker had mentioned, the fact that the project's close to, has a close proximity to transit and amenities like grocery stores, parks, et cetera, it does mean that many of the building's residents won't have to own a car in order to live there and have a good quality of life. You know, building homes like these, apartments like these, it makes for more vibrant, enjoyable street space. It discourages car use, which, you know, beyond, you know, buildings like this just help the city align closer with its long-term climate goals of getting more people out of cars and on, you know, walking around with pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users. So, yeah, I would ask that council take, you know, remind, remember that, to think beyond just the immediate community members, and, you know, think bigger about our region and the types of people who both live and work in the city, and make housing a more feasible reality for them. From my perspective, the project's a no-brainer. It's more housing.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful building.
Thank you. Thank you, Taylor. That is your time, but I think you were very clear. You don't have any questions to council. Council, before we continue, we are at 10 minutes before concluded end time for this session, and just a reminder, council has the opportunity to continue the business tomorrow, to either hear speakers and wrap up questions to staff tonight, which does require a two-thirds vote in favor of the council members present, and to extend past 10:00 PM to complete all business that would include debate and decision would require a unanimous vote of council. So I just wanted to be clear in laying out the options that we have, but if we don't, if council do not bring a forward motion, we will conclude at 10 o'clock and reconvene tomorrow at 6:00. I'm going to advance councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick.
Point of information, what other speakers left on the queue?
We have one speaker that we're trying to get on the line, and then we do have to do a final call for speakers on this item, and then after that, we have one item of business that has one registered speaker.
But on this particular item, there's one speaker, and then we could be completed this item.
I believe we have three on the line now. Councillor Hardwick, for this item.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to move that we extend and finish the agenda's business.
Okay, so you are moving councillor Dominado to extend and complete the business, including debate and decision.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that?
Seconded by councillor Fry.
Seconded by councillor Fry, and I do see councillors on the queue to speak to that. Councillor Digenova, go ahead.
I'd responded to the email, and I had, I'm not sure if you or my, or my other colleagues had seen it, just to be transparent, I wanted to let everyone know I won't be able to do that this evening, so I, I'm happy to hear the end of the speakers on this item. I'd be amenable to that, but since there's a motion on the floor, I'd have to vote against it, which is a bit unfortunate, because I'd like to hear the end of the speakers, at least on this item, and to have seen where we could refer debate and decision, but I do have a child that's ill at home and won't be able to do that. Thank you. So I won't be able to vote in favor.
Thank you, councillor Digenova. Councillor Carr.
Yes, I'm on the chair, sorry, Chair Kirby Young. Is it possible to complete the business in terms of hearing from staff if we desire to hear the speakers and refer debate and decision to a further, future council meeting?
It is possible, but we do have a motion currently on the floor that was moved by councillor Dominado and seconded by councillor Fry, so we would either need to vote on that first or have that withdrawn and have council agree to that in order to refer this business to a future.
I was just asking because I'm not sure if there's a unanimity in terms of making decisions, from what I hear councillor Digenova stating, so I just was questioning that. I am in support of that motion, however, that is on the floor.
Okay. And maybe I'll just ask the clerk to confirm if we were to refer debate and decision, would it go to the next scheduled council meeting later this month? Okay, just so that councillor are clear on that. Okay. But I am hearing some councillors in support of the motion on the floor. Councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. I was actually happy to withdraw the motion. I hadn't seen any of the emails until it was just referenced by councillor Digenova, and if councillor Carr wanted to move her motion to refer outstanding matters to the next council meeting.
Okay, so we're going to have to do this quickly, or we will run down the clock. So councillor Dominado's moving to withdraw. Do I have a seconder to withdraw?
Second.
Councillor Carr, and I'm going to try a verbal vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any in opposition? Okay, hearing none, the motion is withdrawn. So councillor Carr, you have the floor.
Yeah, I have, I'd like to propose a motion that we complete the hearing of the remainder of these items, including speakers, and refer debate and decision on each of the last two items to the next council meeting.
Second, councillor Digenova.
Okay, and can I just confirm with the clerk for that, so that those are aware that the next scheduled council meeting, the date, would you be able to advise that at this point or not? That would be on October 19th, is that correct?
I'm just clarifying something with the staff here.
Okay, great. And councillor Carr, can I just ask you to clarify on the record that your motion is to complete hearing speakers on this item and then refer debate and decision?
And the next item, take, hear the next item two and refer, so we complete the two items, but refer in each case the debate and decision to, maybe I'll say the next appropriate council meeting, leaving it open, but we have
Okay, so we're going to complete
Three minutes left.
I'm just going to reflect that back, so we're all clear on what was being proposed. We're going to complete hearing from speakers on both items three and four, and refer debate and decision on both items to the next scheduled council meeting.
Correct. I seconded that.
Is everybody clear? Okay, if there's nothing further from the clerk, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask the clerk to take us to vote. I'm going to call for a verbal vote on that to see if we can do that quickly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. That motion has carried, so we will continue with speakers. Okay, so clerk, can you advise which speaker we have on the line next, please?
Point of information.
Yes, councillor Hardwick, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, I thought we had a hold on tomorrow evening for public hearing reserve.
We did, but the motion did, in an effort to save an evening, I think, for everybody, has moved debate and decision to the next scheduled council meeting. Councillor Hardwick, that's why we're hearing finishing speakers tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so we have speaker eight on the line, and I'm going to ask if you could identify yourself with your name, if you're a resident or not of Vancouver.
Just a point of privilege, Chair. I was, I was on the queue, I just
Hold on just a moment, speaker. Yes, councillor Digenova?
I just wanted to say that I will be leaving the meeting at 10:00 PM, but I will review any of the speakers before debate and decision. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. And speaker eight, if I can ask you just to identify yourself, if you're a resident or not of Vancouver?
Yep. Yep. Hi, my name's Lesley Adams, and I've been living downtown for over 15 years. Many of my questions have been answered, so time is saved. But while the applicant's with us, I'd be interested to know for the Arts and Culture Hub, how will both the West End arts community and also the citywide arts community be involved in the planning and the design, you know, at a pretty early stage? So it's not, the train's not too far out of the station on that, so I'd be interested to know that, and there are many interesting aspects of the current plan. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, speaker. This is a forum where we're not able to, we can, council can receive the information and ask questions of staff later, but we're not able to answer questions directly. It's our opportunity to hear from you. But thank you for taking the time to speak to council.
So the applicant can't answer?
No, the applicant doesn't answer questions directly from the public, but council are listening to your comments, and they do have an opportunity to follow up later and ask questions of staff.
Okay, 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 thanks.
You're very welcome. Okay, speaker number nine, Jay McVain.
Taking my call, I won't keep you because I know everyone's been here all night, and I do have to wake up early and go to work, but I just wanted to call in and offer my support for the application. I've been a resident of the West End for the last year and a half, frequent the Davie Street Village often, member of the community, and was really happy to see this project. You know, I know it's not going to answer all the solutions to the housing crisis, but I do agree with the previous speakers that adding housing full stop is helpful, and as someone who's trying to get into the housing market myself, and live and work downtown, it's important for me to be able to have housing options in the area. So, yeah, again, I just want to offer my support for the application, and thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you so much for calling in. We appreciate that. Have a good night. Okay, speaker number 10, Catherine Robidoux.
Hello.
Hello. Go ahead, you have five minutes. We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Catherine, and I'm a resident of Vancouver in downtown. I'm speaking tonight in full support of this project. I'll tell you a little bit about why. I don't want to take everyone's time too much. So I'm a recent university graduate, and I have a background in the performing arts. This has shown me that arts and culture spaces are needed across the city, ideally in every neighborhood. That's the component of this proposal that's most intriguing to me. Even though I'm understanding through the discussion tonight that the space will be office-based, I'd love to see this built and dedicated for arts and culture, an arts and culture hub to provide space for local artists. I still think that any space that supports arts and culture, enables organizations to operate, is very important for cultural vitality in the city. I know this neighborhood well, and I think this proposal will add to the vibrancy of Davie Street, especially since the move of the hospital will surely have a big impact on local businesses. So thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts tonight. I'm in full support of the project.
Excellent. Thank you, Catherine, for taking the time to call in late. We appreciate it. Okay, I'm just going to go back and see if we were able to catch up with speaker three, Alan Featherston Howe. Just going back through the list, and that's the speaker that we did not have. Alan Featherston Howe.
Speaker three is not on the line.
Okay. Thank you, clerks. I'm now going to do my three final calls for additional speakers. So at this point, for members of the public, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak on item three to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434 pound. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream, and if there are any speakers in the council chamber, this is the time to come forward.
No speakers are on the line, and no speakers are in the chamber.
Okay, second, second to last call for additional speakers. Call the toll-free number as identified. number as identified, available on Twitter and the live stream, and as has been read out at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434-pound, and any speakers in the chamber should come forward.
No speakers are on the line, and no speakers are in the chamber.
Okay, so seeing that there are no speakers on the line, I am going to note that there's few, or no public comments received after 5:00 p.m. today, and there are no more speakers present wishing to submit comments, that we now close the public comments and move on to hearing. Are we gonna do, clerk, can you just clarify if we're doing closing comments, or if that was also contained in the motion that will be referred to the next council meeting? Okay, so we will move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, but not making a decision. So at this point, does the applicant have any closing comments?
I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight, and for your thoughtful questions and comments, and we look forward to your decision.
Okay, thank you. And does staff have any closing comments on this application?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. No, we don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Okay. And do council have any final questions for staff on this item? Okay, seeing none. I will note that council is previously determined to refer its debate and decision on this item to the next scheduled council meeting. Okay, so that concludes what we're dealing with for item three, everybody, and we will now move on to item number four, zoning and development amendment bylaw, bylaw amendments to allow patios for liquor manufacturers. And before we begin, do any members of council wish to declare conflict on this item? Okay, seeing none. I will now ask the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the general manager of planning urban design and sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw to allow patios on private property for liquor manufacturers with a lounge endorsement, and extend temporary allowance of outdoor patios for businesses on private property on sites where patios are currently not permitted from October 31st, 2021 to March 20, March 31st, 2022. The following pieces of correspondence have been received since referral to public, public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' listening receipt of public comments. Four pieces in support, one piece of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces dealing with other aspects. And this is all correspondence up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Okay, thank you, clerk. And just a note for the public at this point, that any speakers for this item who do wish to, to call in can do so at toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434-pound before close of the list. And again, that phone number is available on Van City Clerk Twitter and the live stream. So we do have Karen Wong, planner for citywide and regional planning, here to present the application, if council would like to see that presentation. Would anybody from council like to see it, or can we wave and move immediately to speakers? Councillor Swanson?
I move that we waive the presentation.
Okay. Any seconder? Councillor Dominado, any in opposition to that? Hearing none. We will, I also want to note that staff is the applicant for this item, so there is an opportunity for councillors to ask questions as they would normally, recognizing that staff are acting as both the staff and the applicant. Any questions at this time? Councillor Swanson, I still see you on the queue, is that a holdover? Councillor Swanson, I'm assuming that's a holdover.
Yep, it's a holdover.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we will now move to hear from the public. We do have one registered speaker on this item, council, that is Adam Henderson.
Hello? I am, yes.
Perfect, we can hear you loud and clear. If you want to identify if you're a resident or not of Vancouver, and you have five minutes to speak to council.
Great, thank you. Yes, thanks for staying up for me. I am a resident of Vancouver. I'm also the co-owner and co-founder of Superflux Beer Company, which is a brewery on Clark Drive in East Ban. And I'm a member of the B.C. Craft Brewers Guild, which represents over 200 breweries in B.C., including all the 26 breweries that are located here in Vancouver. So on behalf of both, I'm pleased that council is considering this motion that's been put forward. And I can speak on behalf of both myself and the guild that we do support the motion to allow patios for liquor manufacturers as proposed in this report. As I think is probably quite obvious, patios have had a huge impact on our business and any hospitality business, and we're not out of the uncertainty of COVID at this time either. So it gives us a chance to recoup some of our losses that we've suffered, as well as that of many of our membership. We do believe that council and city staff wouldn't be considering this were it not for the care and attention that we've all shown while responsibly operating our patios through the temporary expedited patio program. And this program was an example to us of what a motivated council and city staff can do to work to positively impact our amazing beer industry by providing us with some quick and easy fixes to our challenges. So we thank you for that. In that spirit, though, I just wanted to mention that although we support the motion, we really do want to take the opportunity, both as a guild and as, on behalf of some of the breweries that are my colleagues, to see if we can ask city staff, council, and management to do a little bit more as we work to make some of these outdoor spaces permanent. So these bylaws and amendments are just a first step, and why they themselves are quite clear. The issue that has been shared by most of the breweries in the city is the actual application of the bylaws as we go through the lengthy and various permitting processes that we have to go to. City staff have developed a draft plan of this, and perhaps that's what Karen was going to present, which was, we were very happy to be consulted with that, but unfortunately, we don't feel that it is satisfactory. So for example, you could look in any brewery in Vancouver and ask them how easy, or, well, not easy, how challenging it was for them to get the 80 square meters of lounge that the bylaws seem to clearly authorize. For my brewery and our project, it took us 18 months to get the necessary permits to open our brewery and lounge. And largely, this is because we had to deal and negotiate with staff over what portions of our lounge would be defined as that 80 square meters. So that, to me, is something that should be standard, and that too a lot of our membership is. You know, that's the area where people sit and drink, but we have to barter over what is gonna get counted, whether it's portions of our bar or retail area, which we clearly don't intend to see. And now our membership is potentially facing going through this with the, with a patio that they've already built and designed. They've already paid architects and contractors to build and design a patio to city specs, which albeit were temporary specs. So that leaves us with the question of why that change is there. So we're sincerely happy to, that Karen and her team had involved us in the planning, but we just feel like there's more consultation needed in order to have this rolled out effectively, so that it really is beneficial to us. I, for example, would prefer to just take the rules of the temporary program and have those extended permanently and be grandfathered into that. That's something that doesn't give me more seats, doesn't increase my license capacity, but it would be a simple process, an instant win, and involves no additional work for city staff. So options like this weren't really proposed to us, but, again, this might not work for all my colleagues, but this is essentially, you know, us taking the fast, quick, and amazing work that was done for the temporary program and making that permanent. And that just seems to be off the table, and we're back to looking at, you know, potentially almost a year of permits, because that's really what it's taken for some of these. And there's a lot of interfacing with provincial government as well. So we need to get back to business, and we request that the city helps us do that by, by eliminating some of this unneeded complexity. We, we don't think that there have been any issues, let alone widespread issues, as a result of the temporary patio programs, and we think that that's helped us earn the right to, to be able to explore these on a more simple basis, because we've all worked really, really hard to keep our businesses open during this difficult time. So again, we totally support the bylaw amendment, and we think the way that that's written is great, but I think there's more to be done, and we just look forward to greater collaboration on the program and how it's rolled out to better support our partners in small business in the city of Vancouver. So thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm gonna take the opportunity to ask a question myself. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, because you seem that you covered a bit of ground between the regular permitting processes that related to sort of your inside space, and then with respect to the patio space and TEP. I wonder if you could just zero in for me on what you think the key challenges or differences are between the TEP and what you understand the new requirements to be for this more regularized patio program that would permanently allow establishments like yours to have patios where they didn't before?
Yeah, so in summary, I mean, it's, it's a bit difficult for me to really know, and based on the consultation we did have and the plan that we saw, we had our architect try to take his best guess at this, and there's still confusion. And we've had, I, this is not my experience personally, but another brewery member had reached out about, you know, how big their patio can be and what the, so the size is clear, it's 80 square meters, but how many occupants that results in. And that's a bit convoluted for us to figure out as well. Then that turns into an issue of parking or an issue of washrooms. And none of that was considered in the temporary program. So that kind of just, it makes us feel like we're gonna be back on the path of the process we went through to just get our initial lounge permits. And again, the lounge license is a different DP in a lot of cases than the track for just the brewery, because that's the area that gives us the ability to serve liquor on-site to our customers, which is a really important part of our business, and obviously the one most affected by COVID. So that's kind of the issues that we have. And the parking thing is big, too, because this is, again, this is specifically, as far as I understand it, this motion is only for patios on private property. So if you have a patio on private property, any of the breweries I'm aware of, that is in your parking lot. Nobody else has a flat piece of ground that they could put a patio on that isn't a parking lot, like that's what the land would be used for. So we're going to all lose parking spaces, but we have to now go through a justification of where we're gonna put cars. And we, we've been doing this, you know, some people have been doing this since last spring, and my brewery's been doing this since April of this year. So we, you know, we already have a solution to this problem, and we're just a little leery of entering a whole new 12-month approval process, and then having to get approval from the city before we then go and get our final approval from the province, which is, the province is gonna be looking at something like, I think it's like 1,200 applications for patios, because everybody opened patio in the last year. So it's gonna take a while. We already have this, so we think there's a faster way. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful in terms of additional clarification. Thank you for that. And I don't see any further questions for you from council, so thank you also for staying up for us.
Hey, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, council, I'm gonna now move for final calls for speakers, unless, just, I'll just confirm with the clerk, there are no other speakers on the line at this point? Is that correct?
No, there are no speakers on the line or in the council chamber.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna do my call three times for any additional speakers. So if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, you have the opportunity to call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, or followed by participant code 83434-pound before close of the speakers' list. And again, that number is available on at Van City Clerk and via the live stream. And again, any speakers in chambers could come forward. My first call?
There are no other speakers on the line or in the chamber.
Okay, and second call for speakers? Okay, we're gonna do this by the book. We're gonna read it again. You might, this number might sound familiar. Any speakers, call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 83434-pound. And before close of the speakers' list, again, available via the channels on Van City Clerk and the live stream. And seeing no speakers in the chamber, second call for speakers.
There are no speakers on the line or in the chamber.
Okay, thank you, clerk. And third and final call, would you like me to read it again? Okay, any speakers from this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the now infamous participant code 83434-pound before close of the speakers' list. Again, you know where to find the number, at Van City Clerk and on the live stream. And this is the third and final call for speakers, seeing none in the chamber also.
No speakers are on the line or in the chamber.
Okay. So I'm now going to close receipt of the speakers' list, council. And as noted earlier, debate and decision has been referred to the next regularly scheduled council meeting on this item. And would somebody like to provide? Oh, closing comments? Oh, so close. Sorry, just a little bit of late-night humor. So we have closed the list, and we do have an opportunity for the applicant to make any closing comments. Any closing comments for the applicant?
There are no closing comments.
You sure? Okay, any closing comments from staff, being one of the same?
Again, no closing comments.
Thank you very much. And any councillors have any questions for staff? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Okay, as mentioned, try this again. We have referred debate and decision to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, so this does conclude the business for the public hearing at this time. And would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I thought you might, councillor Hardwick, seconded by councillor Dominado. Any opposition? Hearing none. We are now adjourned, council. Thank you for your work this evening, and thank you to members of the public that participated. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff.